Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is November 8, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Welsh may be arriving after roll call. If he does not, he has requested to be excused, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Costin?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Stanky?
Here.
Seven Preston and one excused.
Thank you. Item four is business. Four A is citizens' input. Citizens' input is a maximum of 60 minutes, set for input on citizens or matters concerning the city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We utilize the podium to my left, your right.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council. David Jimenez, President, IU PAT 2301. I'm here before you because of the wage study, which is going to be talked about today. So I just want to come up and say thank you for getting it done and then us moving forward with it. It does show wages are behind, I think it was 6%. And in the future, we very much so look forward to working with the city, trying to figure out, you know, benefits, if there's anything we can do, and be constructive and work together with that. So with that, I just want to say thank you and have a great day.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmembers.
The other podium, ma'am. Thank you.
Oh, this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Councilmembers. I am Simone Fajira, the owner of Cape Coral Kayak. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I just want to mention a few things that are unique about our kayak business. Our kayak service is by appointment only. We make easy for visitors and local residents to go kayaking. We have been operating from Serena Vista Park for more than three years. We're always very respectful of everyone using the kayak launch or visiting the park. We're open to any ideas how we should operate from the park system. Once again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Counselors. My name is Robert King. I come before you each and every Veterans Day weekend. Mr. Mayor Gunter, as you have taken part in our Veterans Day event. I own a small hair salon here in the city on Southeast 47th Terrace. And each Veterans Day weekend, we host an event to raise awareness to the 22 veterans a day we lose to suicide. From 10:00 a.m. on Friday, which is the Marine Corps birthday, we start cutting hair, and we cut hair all the way till 8:00 a.m. Saturday morning. The 22 hours obviously is reflection of the servicemen and women that we lose to suicide per day. I'm here today to invite the city, the workers, to take part in this event. In the past, we've had amazing support from this city, and we call this city home, so it's a team effort. My staff and I are committed to each year bringing this number as low as we possibly can get it. To date, we've raised about $40,000 over the last four years. Two years ago was our biggest year. We raised over $22,000 in one day. Last year, we all know what happened with Hurricane Ian, but we were still able to raise over $10,000 in one day. That $10,000 put windows in a veteran's home and a floor in another veteran's home. Being a veteran myself, this event is extremely important to me and my family. So again, we'd like to invite you, as a Purple Heart city, if anybody has any questions, I'll be emailing you all directly today with information on the event. And I'd like to thank you for your support in advance, and thank you for what you do for the city. It's been very kind of my family and my business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. I'll open up for any council discussion on citizens' input. Just real quickly, the gentleman that spoke referenced to the veterans. You know, I participated in that event two years ago, and I'll surely stop by on Friday as well, so I look forward to seeing you down there on Friday. Councilmember Cummings?
Mayor, where is the salon at? What's the name of the salon?
It's down on 47th Street, right down, you know, in the heart of the downtown area. Sir, why don't you come on back up here and give us the address? One of the councilmembers here asked, and also for anyone that may be watching, the name of your salon again and the address, if you would, please.
Thank you very much. I was trying to avoid the shameful plug, but my salon is called Somewhere on 47th Terrace, and it's located this year. We had to move because of damage from the storm. We moved to 4720 Southeast 15th Ave., which is basically across the street. It's the old news press building. We do still face 47th Terrace, so if anybody is familiar with signs in one day, or we're directly across the street, right on the corner of 47th Terrace and Southeast 15th Ave. Is it okay to give the phone number?
Sure.
239-599-4383. We do welcome walk-ins. Myself, I'm booked for 22 hours straight, so I'm really looking forward to the support, and the city actually drives us to keep going with this incredible cause, so.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item 4B discussion. B1 is Presentation, Segal, regarding the Total Compensation Study for General and Non-Bargaining Employees. I'll turn it over to Mr. City Manager first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have a presentation from the HR Department and Segal Waters on the Total Compensation Study. Just generally, I will say that, you know, as the report concluded and upon review, you know, there's two ways that administration intends to utilize the data contained within it. There are some macro-level details that we can use to fix, or not fix, but address and look at how to be competitive in the market more globally. And then there are some more finite, micro-level details on specific jobs that we appear to have undervalued compared to our peers, and some other details in there that we can all use to make sure that we offer a competitive compensation package, which does not only include wages but also benefits. And so with that, I'll turn it over to begin the presentation.
Let me start. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director and interim HR Director, a mayor and council. We have with us today Ruth Ann Elidge from the Segal Group, who did the analysis, collected the data, and put it into the document that you have before you, as well as the presentation. Couple of things in the background associated with this. We sat with and met with the IU PAT leadership and selected the positions that were reviewed with regard to the General Employees Union. We agreed on the cities that were utilized in the analysis, and the results of the analysis will show that there are some undervalued positions. Certainly, there are competitive positions, and there are some positions that have been that are in areas that are probably above the base wages that we're looking at in the peer cities that we compared against. However, it best that, you know, the folks that actually did the work give you a presentation on this, and then we can certainly answer any questions and discuss the results of the analysis afterwards. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ruth Ann Elidge. I'm with Segal, and I have been your project leader from the Segal Compensation side for this study. I do appreciate the opportunity for working with the City of Cape Coral, and I'm looking forward to going over this report and providing you with any clarifications that you might need. With me today is Rebecca Dayton. She is our analytics person and does a lot of the calculations and methodology, so we'd like for her to be here to help answer any questions that we might need to cover in more detail. What we have done today is put together a presentation that will kind of guide our conversation, certainly willing to answer any questions as we go along through the presentation or at the end as well. So we'll talk for just a moment about what we were trying to accomplish with the study, what our methodology was, the findings, and then, again, answer any questions that you might have. When we started this study, the objective was really to look at total compensation of a group of employees here working at the City of Cape Coral. We wanted to look at your pay position in relation to direct pay, to benefits, which include retirement, health care, and then look at other types of benefits. Some of them are non-compensation benefits that we call like paid time off or any other types of special incentives that might be provided to reward the employees that are working here for you and providing those services to the community. So the scope of this was to do what we call the Total Compensation Analysis. As Mark said, there were a selected group of employers that we surveyed to gather this information. The methodology used in this was to create a custom survey that was sent to all of these peers that you see here. There are a total of seven peers, eight, two, four, six, nine peers, excuse me, I can't count today, total of nine peers, and three of them were for informational purposes only. So we gathered the data, we presented the data on those three peers, but they were not using the analysis. We were able to gather data from all nine of these peers, again, and some of it includes peers that gave us the information to put into the survey document for them, and then others actually completed the survey, excuse me. So the surveys were collected, completed with information from the peer employers, and then tabulated based on the documentation that we've received. One of the things that Segal did do was review the data, and if we had questions about it, we were able to go back and clarify it with the peers. We also shared the data at a time with the HR team. I know that the Garing Group is here also as a consultant for your benefits, to make sure everybody felt that they were comfortable with the data, because it was important for everybody to feel like it was reliable data. In the analysis, we split the analysis between two groups of positions. One of them was the general union positions, and the other one was the non-bargaining positions. And what we found is that the non-bargaining positions and the union positions both were, some of them were overall lagging in pay. When we look at pay, we first look at the pay structure, at the pay range, and we look at the entry of the pay range, the minimum, the midpoint of the pay range, and the maximum. And we use a, the city has adopted a pay policy of being at the 75th percentile. So in our analysis, we compare that data point to your pay ranges to see how you compare under those circumstances, under those parameters. And so you'll see on this slide here that we've identified jobs or identified data points that are outside of what we call the competitive quarter. The competitive quarter is plus or minus 5% of what the market is telling us. So anything that's below 95% or above 105%, we tag as either a lead position or a lag position. And in this particular slide here, you'll see that the pay range minimums and the pay range maximums, on average, for all of the general union positions, are below what we call that competitive range of pay. The midpoint was at 95%, was right there at the low end of that competitive range. For the non-bargaining positions, we also found that there was some lagging as well overall, 94% at the minimum and 95% at the maximum of your pay range. So this is just one of the first steps we take to look at total compensation. First, look at base pay to see how your structure compares and how competitive is with your peers. Then we bring in the other data from the rest of the analysis, which includes looking at your health care contributions, your retirement contributions, and we tabulate what we call the total compensation. And we'll go into the methodology for analyzing that data in just a few moments. But as a result of that analysis, when we bring in the other data, we can then evaluate the competitiveness overall. And what you see is your health benefits and your retirement benefits are strong, and so they kind of increase that overall competitiveness from a total compensation package. This is information for you to think about, because this is explaining more or less where you put your dollars. It's a little bit lower in your base pay and a little bit higher in your health care and your retirement. So again, you can see the analysis here on this page for both the general union positions as well as the non-bargaining positions. Just a little bit about the benefits analysis now. We've talked a little bit about pay. The benefits analysis did look at health and retirement, paid time off, paid policies, and we found that in general, if we set aside the health and retirement, most of the rest of your pay policies and pay practices are fairly similar and competitive with what we saw in the market. So putting that aside for now, I wanted to look a little bit about at your health care, your health contributions. When we look at how you compare to what other employers are providing in terms of the annualized cost of health care per employer, we see that the City of Cape Coral is averaging a little higher than what your peers are. And these peers are those six employers that you saw on the screen previously. Those six employers were averaging $11,015. This is based on the PPO. There's a lot of assumptions you make here when you're calculating health care costs, and this is based using your PPO plan as a point of comparison, and the distribution of your employees within that PPO plan, how many are in the employee only and so forth. You have a significant number of employees that are in your employee only, and there's very little contribution on their behalf or none, so therefore, there's a lot of pay that's going from the city to pay for the employee-only contributions. But you can see here for your employee only, yours is the orange column that shows that you have a higher contribution on behalf of the employee than your peers do. It's a little bit lower in the employee and spouse, and employee and other, and in the family. But as I said, 77%, I believe, of your employees are in the employee-only category, and so that's what's driving that higher cost, because that's the biggest cost share for the city. If you look at employee retirement contributions, the city has a total contribution rate of 34.85%. This includes any type of retirement contribution that the city provides on behalf of the employee, DB plan, any type of contribution that is provided, when you collect it from your peers as well, to get a total amount. Yours is at 34.65%. Now, these six peers were averaging much lower, at the 21.52%. But overall, if you look at the Florida pension plans statewide, they're more competitive, the city's more competitive on average across the state you're seeing. So these six peers are lower, but on average with the rest of the state, y'all are pretty much in line with what we see. And this is from the Florida Retirement System Bureau of Labor documentation that we've Looking at paid time off, if you look at paid time off, the City of Cape Coral is competitive with your peer employers. We look at it at different points in service, from year one to five, 10, 15, 20, and 25-plus, and in each case, you're very competitive with your peers. So that's a good, it's a good thing, because it helps employees become able to balance their life with their work, so you have a good, strong PTO plan or paid time off. So as I mentioned earlier, when you bring all this together to do a calculation, to look at overall total compensation, in this analysis, what we've done is we've taken four year general union positions, the average pay range midpoint as a point of comparison, brought in the average employer health contribution and retirement contribution to establish a total employer cost for comparative purposes. We did the same thing with your peers, and again, you can see this is where you're beginning to catch up with the market when you add in your retirement and health contributions. This is for the general union positions. And if you see here for the non-bargaining positions, again, taking the average range midpoint and using that as a point of comparison, and then bringing forward the overall costs, the health care costs remain the same, but your contribution, retirement contribution is going to vary based on the percentage that is taken of your overall average midpoint. And you can see here is where you have a more competitive total compensation package, you know, with your balancing the pay with the overall other compensation components. So I've gone through this fairly quickly. The report is very lengthy, and I know there's a lot of data in it. Happy to answer any questions about our methodology or any other questions you might have about the study.
Okay, and I'll open up for council. Has any questions? Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any way to measure, if you will, the interest in or the weight in which the employees and potential employees that we'd be looking at to hire into the city, how much weight they place on the benefits versus the cash compensation? What I know from being here a long time is many people, they're seeing Florida as their final resting place, so to speak, and so they're coming here with a transitional employment need, and my experience has been that many of them are more interested in cash in hand than they are in the benefits and the value of those benefits being used in a comparison between who they choose to go to work for. And more and more, as we go to a dual-income family, the spouse of that person that would be looking to us as an applicant or the person that is one of our employees, they may have a better benefits package where they are and that spouse's benefits are being considered as the health care, the dental, whatever that would be that's important to them, and they're driving mostly for the dollar amount in their paycheck. Is there any way to measure that and kind of determine where we are locally that way?
So what you're citing is kind of a general trend that we're seeing in the marketplace because of the generational differences in our workforce, and there's several studies that have been done. Now, not locally, oftentimes organizations will do what they call a culture assessment, and Ashley do ask employees about, you know, what is most important to you? Benefits, retirement, direct pay? And they can measure the cultural identity of your workforce as you do that type of analysis internally. But I will say, councilmember, that that's a common trend we're seeing now, is that you can have great health benefits and you can have great retirement benefits, but some of the younger generations are not so much interested in retirement as they are money in their pocket. And so you can do that. This did not cover that, but it's certainly a policy decision that you can now make, now that you know where you are in all three of those categories, if you will, those different buckets.
So have some employers, as you've seen, that might be our competitors, or at least our sampling, our sample group, putting more emphasis on the cash and making the benefits available to be purchased back if they want them, and if they don't want them, then they have the cash in their pocket if they don't?
We didn't ask that question of them, but that is a common theme for some of the peers or the ones that we've seen in the marketplace, is to actually provide options, you know, kind of a menu, if you will, of how many want to participate in certain types of benefits and others have more in their pocket. In fact, some employers have moved towards providing a cash compensation to employees if they choose, if they do not select the medical services or the medical plans. So that is an option, and that certainly is something that some of the employers that we work with have done, and it's something you can consider.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could, our recruitment staff generally, you know, when they're recruiting, you know, is taking much of this information into account with regard to hiring. And what we are seeing is that benefits are very important to the employees that we hire. It, you know, it depends on, in many cases, it depends on the person and whether they want to come here and at a discounted basis because of the benefits, as opposed to in spite of them, and more cash in the pocket. And I understand the concept of both, but what we find is that the people that are coming here is primarily in support of the benefits.
And I'll say, I was in a meeting a couple months ago at Florida League of Cities, and one of the things that they discussed is the younger generation of employees. What you're seeing more with them is exactly what you said, they're more concerned with the actual pay. I think probably they're single individuals that might not have a family, just starting out, so the pay is the most important thing. I think as you get older, you start a family, I think that's probably when you start looking at the benefit packages. But I do believe, like Mr. Mason said, a lot of people, the reason they come to work for state agency, a municipality, county government, is because they're looking for some of those benefits. You know, looking through the data, a few things I thought was fairly interesting, and you had mentioned in your presentation. If you look at the total overall package for the bargaining employees and the non-bargaining, we're pretty close to identical, just slightly under 6%, a difference from where the average is and where we are as a city. You know, it's almost exactly the same, so I thought that was pretty interesting. And I thought, you know, when you look through the, all the positions, I think there was 55 positions, 34 of those positions were identified that were below the average, and then there were a few noted that were above the average. You know, so I think that's something, when we try to take a look at this and develop a policy, how we're going to move forward, I think, like we have done since I've been here over the last six years, is we've tried to adopt that 75th percentile methodology. So if we're going to do that, I guess my question to you is, would we be better to look at the ranges for these positions and adjust the ranges accordingly? And the reason that I ask that question, because like I said, there were some noted positions that were much higher than the average. So if we just did a blanket approach, just, okay, we're going to give everybody a 5% raise to try to get to that point, then the people who are above already will just be above more. So should we strategically look at these positions and try to do it with range adjustments? I know the city manager said it was a little bit of both.
It is a little bit of both, Mayor. It's a matter of, it's, for any of those positions that are, you know, materially and significantly below, they're, from a classification standpoint, they need to be reclassified. And so we would look at those on an individual-by-individual basis, but this is all part and parcel of the negotiation process.
So that, you know, that was one of the things that I wanted to make sure that, you know, we just didn't do a blanket approach, because if we move forward in that methodology, we could be compounding some problems that we've already identified. And I'm here to try to fix problems, not compound them and make them worse than they are now. The other question that I have... they are now. The other question that I have, and you may not have this answer, but I would like to see if, you know, I know the unions have discussed, hey, everyone else, as far as employees, got 6.25%, and we only got 3.25%. If we, and that's maybe not a discussion for today because I'm sure you don't have the data, what I would like to see is if we did the 3% across the board, that would get them closer, what would be the financial impact of that 3%? Oh, he may have that?
I do have that.
Oh. I mentioned it yesterday in my one-on-one meeting, but I didn't, I didn't, I didn't realize we'd have it that quickly.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, while he's bringing that up, I just confirmed. So one thing I want to just make sure that we're aware as we begin to think about utilizing this data and, and moving forward. So the pay component, we, we benchmark to the 75th percentile. In the healthcare and the retirement contributions, that was only, that is only benchmarked to the average. So if we want, if we want to, as we continue to move forward, talk about having a total compensation package that is beating the average in all facets, that middle column and the right column is only pegged to average in these charts. So just, just to clarify that.
Okay. Mr. Mason.
Yes, sir. If you did it as of January, overall, across all funds, would be about $1.1 million.
Okay. All right. So I think that's something that, something we have to look at, you know, the, the $1.1 million with the understanding, we know that's a reoccurring expense each and every year. So that's, that's just for this one-year time period. And I will tell you, you know, since I've been a business owner for 36 years until I came here to the city, not only for myself, but for some of my employees as well, I was always shopping insurance, health insurance. And it's a very complex market because you can say you have an HMO or a PPO, but unless you really look at each one of those plans, they, they could be very diverse, you know, between the two. And so I know that we've noted HMO and PPOs in the, in the data that was provided, but, you know, I, I realize that that is a very complex issue. You know, I noticed that I think our individuals, what about a little over $1,100, if I recall correctly, is what it cost us for that particular plan. And I noted that some other jurisdictions were in the 700 range. So when you take a look at that, it may be an HMO to an HMO, but I think you got to really look at the plan. I've had plans where there's a $5,000 deductible in an HMO, and then there's a plan that, you know, may have a $1,000 deductible. So they're, even though they're HMOs, they're, they're structured quite differently. So I know that's kind of hard to really analyze, but it is something I think we have to take into consideration. So I think for me personally, if we are going to develop a policy of the 75th percentile, that's what we should strive to. How we get there, you know, I'll leave that up to the experts. You know, I realize that it'll be a little bit of both, probably across the board, and also some, some range adjustments. And we'll have to tweak those to make sure that we try to get everybody within that 75th percentile. And I think that's important. So that's kind of where I'm at. You know, I think we develop a policy, how we want to move forward, direct staff to, okay, this is what we want to do. And we already know it's going to cost, if we did, say we did 3%, we're still not going to be to the 6%, a little less than 6% that the data is showing us. But then with the, the, you know, the union conversations and discussions that, whether it's the generals or whomever it may be, during their union negotiations, they can take this data. If we decided to go down and say, okay, we're going to do the 3% across the board, what I would ask, and I asked the city manager that yesterday, if this council collectively wanted to go in that direction, what I would like to see is, if we do that, let's redo the numbers and see where we end up with that 3% applied across the board. And that'll give us a, an updated understanding. We could do that either before or after we make that decision, but I think that's important to know. We know where we are now. So if we did something else, whatever that something else is, let's review the data again to see where that brings us to. That will help, I think, not only city staff, but it'll help the unions in their discussions moving forward, and it'll help us because we'll see where we're at then. So that's, that's my thoughts, looking through the data. I'm going to go to councilmember Cummings first, since she hasn't spoken yet, and then I'll come back to you. Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. I have some questions here. So we were talking about, I believe, there's a total of union workers, I, I believe is the correct, 933 is what we're talking about with the, with the workers for this, for this pay, trying to go from 3.25% up to 6%?
I'm sorry.
In the total of city of Cape Coral.
Nonrepresented positions, do you know how many?
There's about 140, 150 nonrepresented positions.
And then the balance of those?
The balance is about nine, a little over, almost 1,000.
Okay.
Employees in the general union.
So my question is, is when I was doing the math and looking at bringing it up 3.25% to go to 6%, the pay raise wasn't really that much. Am I correct, Mark? Is it like under a dollar?
Well, it, it would depend on the position. That would, it would depend on the position. But, I mean, this was a negotiated contract.
Okay. So what I was looking at is using our frontliners. So where they were at, where we agreed at 15, if we did this 3.25, I think it was like less than a dollar of, of what we were looking at. So kind of what the mayor was talking about, kind of taking a look at each section and see what they're making is...
Less more power.
Just because, you know, we've talked, we want to be the best. And I know we're losing people going to Fort Myers. I know we got people going to Pointe de Gorda. And we have great medical coverage, and that is awesome. But I feel like we need to bring up the wages too because of, we're in the same situation we were a while back ago. So we brought it up to 15. That still isn't helping. And yet we have a tier program, so it is hard. So if we give the one tier, then he makes the same money as two-tier. And the two-tier makes the same money as three-tier. So we are in one of those situations I call pickle barrel. So we have to figure out what is the best way to separate it to where each person in their category makes the money that they deserve. To me, like, let's use our frontliners, that personally, I feel like they should be at least $18 an hour. But then you've got the second, third, fourth, fifth tier. So how do we fix this? And, and that's what I'm looking at, is how can we fix this so they have great medical coverage and they have a great pay, and we don't lose our men and women? If anything, they all want to come here and work, and then we get the best of the best. So in some cases, what the mayor was saying, I'm in agreement, we got to take a look at, you know, each category of the workers, where their salary range is.
And that's one of the reasons that you, so when, when we are putting these packages together, we're looking at both recruitment options, which are, what are those elements that, that capture people? But then the, the key point, and not to overlook it, the reason you look at the midpoint is because that kind of gives you the target of your attention. So if you do really well coming in the door at, at the front end, but you don't do well in years five through 10, then that's the time you've spent two to three years investing in training somebody, getting them up to speed with policies, programs, state laws, sending them to, to, you know, professional development courses, and then you lose them because now they can take that knowledge to another competitor locally or even travel to, across the state and make more money. So you, the reason we look at this, both at the, the front end and the, and the back end, as well as in the middle, is to make sure, we're not just building a package here to recruit people, we also want to retain them because turnover is expensive as well.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking at that 3.25%. It's, it's really not much. So at the end of the day, it's like, you know, we're giving you 3.25, so now we're matching the city level. So we would be at 6.25, I, I believe. And is that still going to make a difference?
Well, I think Mark said, so it's, if what you're looking at, the mayor, so there was, it's a 3.25% is a progression through range for the, for the collective bargaining.
Right.
They had no range adjustment. So that is taking the entire compensation schedule and adjusting it to market. There, there was no adjustment to market that, that I understand built in.
Not, not for fiscal year 2024, no.
Nor, nor last year, right?
I think we had a range adjustment last year.
Okay. So this year, they only got a...
Plus we did the 4.25%, which, which had a material impact.
Right. So last year, that, that additional money went to an actual range adjustment, which is basically how you're competing in the market. This year, in, they, there was only a progression through range, but no adjustment of the range, a CPI adjustment for our entire range. And I, I think that's what the mayor was referencing, is taking that 3% and putting it to the market and then looking at, okay, if we did that, rerunning it, where are we at? Do we now, are we now from the 94% into the 97, 98? Does that make us better, more competitive in that, in the market category for wages? And that, that was the 1.1 you said?
Yeah, across all funds.
Okay, I'm just looking at it with a different naked eye and kind of breaking it down. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Stanky.
Thanks. So obvious to most, we're not here today to negotiate a contract or come up with a solution, but what to do with the data and, and what data might be missing or how to go and what direction we should go with the data. And just, I just wanted to comment on the, the thought that the, that the benefits side was only done to the average. That, that may end up being one of the keys in this because, as I've spoken with employees and with former employees, the benefits themselves have never been the issue. It was the cost of the benefits. And the cost of the benefits ends up affecting net in pocket. So, so what, when, when they're weighing out that, how much do I make, what benefits do I have, at the end of the day, I think what's most important, if polled, is what's left jingling in my pocket. And so if, if we're only focusing on, on the, the actual rate of pay and not what has to come out of that rate of pay for the benefits that they have available to them, then we might be missing a major component in develop, in developing not total economic package, but total net economic package. And so I would be in favor of taking a look at what, moving that, the, the benefits side of the total economic package to that 75th percentile rather than average, I would be interested in seeing what financial impact that would have on top of the actual adjustments in, in the grades and the ranges.
We can look at that.
Yeah, I think today what we, and I'm, Mr. City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're looking for is a direction from a majority of us of what we want to do with the data and what our next steps are. And, you know, when you talk about the health insurance that councilmember Stanky brought up, and I thought it was kind of interesting in the presentation, you said 77% of the employees here in the city only have individual coverage. Is that what I heard you to say correctly?
Okay, all employees have individual coverage.
Right.
77% don't have a spouse coverage, they don't have a child coverage, they don't have a family coverage. That's, that's what that really means.
Exactly. So the, the individual insurance is paid 100% by the city for the individual employee.
Correct.
And then if you want to add a spouse or a family plan, it, it costs more, of course, and the employee pays for that, whatever that contribution is. Like I have the family plan, so I'm probably, you know, paying the higher, the higher rate. You know, but I thought it was still kind of ironic that out of, out of the 100%, 77% of, of the employees only had the individual free coverage, and the other 23% was either spouse or family plan, which, in, in my opinion, that's kind of low. And that could reflect, you know, why we are paying a higher premium for those because we don't have as many people in the program.
Not everybody has, is married or has children or, I mean, we have a lot of single employees.
I understand that. But my point is, only 23% of the employees have a married spouse or a family plan. So if you only have 23% of our employees that are participating, we're going to be paying a premium for that. Not to include what's the average age. That's, that's the other variable.
And I think I should also point out, this only includes the PPO plan. This doesn't include the HMO plan. It doesn't include all the plans. It just includes the PPO. So it's, there's, there's others that are in the PP, in the HMO plan that have family coverage or spouse coverage or children coverage.
Okay. So I think, moving forward, I think staff is looking for a direction. You know, for me, the last six years I've been here, it's always, we try to strive for the 75th percentile. Now, you know, I think, since we've got the wage study, we got the data, let's see what type of adjustments or what our, our next action plan will be to try to get to that. And I think, you know, for me, if you look at the data, you have the bargaining and the non-bargaining booth, or about 6%, you know, behind the average. You know, so I personally would feel comfortable with doing the 3% to get them to the 6.25% that we've already given other employees here in the city. That way it's equal across the board. We know it's going to help the numbers, you know, it's not going to get them to the 6, but it'll, it'll get us halfway there. And then the unions coming up, you know, the generals, they start their negotiations in January. We can revise the presentation that was given today, see where that lands us, and then, and then move forward from there. And, and have those discussions, and the city manager can bring that information back. So that, that's where I'm at with it. You know, I think we just, if we're going to adopt the 75th percentile, give that direction to the city manager, then he can come back at a later date and say, okay, we're going to do X. This is how much it's going to cost us to do X. And then any further adjustment in ranges or whatnot can be done at a later time and also be done in the contract negotiations and work with the unions on that. One thing that I don't want to start doing, and councilmember Kyle's in, I know you've been here longer than I have, typically, we've always agreed with a three-year contract. That's what our, that way we can budget. We know for the next three years what our expenses are going to be for payroll. One thing that I don't want to get in a, you know, a routine of doing is every year, we're, it seems like we're talking about salary adjustments. And I know economic times now is a little different. We have high inflation, you know, so I think the employees probably are feeling the pinch a little more because their salaries are low, inflation is high. So they're, they're probably feeling it a little more now than they did, say, five years ago. But what I don't want to get in a practice of doing is when we adopt three-year contracts, that every six, eight months, we're having this discussion. You know, I think we adopt the 75th percentile. Once we get there, then it's up to the unions, no matter which union it is, to negotiate, knowing they got a forecast for the future because this is today's data. Next year, it's going to be different. This is only one particular time. And so I think that's the union's responsibility, okay, to try to do the forecasting. How are we going to stay in that 75th percentile once we try to get them there? How are we going to stay there the next three years? That's up to them. And our negotiation team to try to work that out. So that's where I'm at. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, that, that was just the only point that I wanted to make, is obviously, of course, you want to make, uh, you want to make it right with our employees, which obviously is our greatest asset, but I'm torn between that fact and the fact that we've got contracts in place and we have a reason for those, the reason being, which you, you hinted at, is so that we can, we can budget, uh, to the best of our ability and forecast expenditures and that sort of thing, and it makes it difficult for us to do that when it seems like, again, to me, at least every three or six months, we're, we're looking at this again. I believe we've already changed it, how many, Mr. City Manager, do you have any idea how many changes that we've made as far as the salary for the unions post, uh, negotiating the previous contract?
This should have been the third adjustment, uh, in the contract, the last year.
Sure, right, and, and that last period ended when?
It ends next October.
So, and I understand, of course, the times are, are, are a little different than, than what has been historically, but when you look at that, you look at the context of that, sure, you want to make it, uh, as close to possible as a 75th, which was the target when we entered into the last negotiation, um, which they, which they agreed to. And so, um, you don't, I don't want to set a precedent where you keep moving the finish line, because again, looking historically at the way the unions operate, is, is they kind of draw straws and see who, who's up to, to kind of set the next ceiling, and then the other ones follow right behind. And so then we're constantly evolving and, and renegotiating contracts that are supposed to be locked in for a set period of time. Um, so that's something that, that, that we'll struggle with, but as far as the data here, thank you all for being here. Uh, you know, I have every confidence that our staff's going to be able to look at this and, and, and give us guidance as to how best to proceed, but for me, of course, that's going to be something that I, that I continue to, to, to keep my finger on the pulse of, is getting towards that 75th, but also being cognizant of the fact that if we allow it to, that will always be a moving target. And so where do we kind of set that and, and allow it to run its course until the next contract? Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, the 75th percentile has always been the goal, but we always seem to be chasing the 75th percentile, whatever that is, whoever that's comparing it to with the cities that, uh, you know, we do our comparisons with, but, um, is it better to look at a, a standard that's at 80% rather than 75%? So at least during those three years of the, uh, uh, contracts that were, uh, somewhere ahead of, ahead of the game, because we, we continue to have the same discussion, not only with this council, but with councils before us that were constantly striving to get there, whatever that number is, another comparable city is going to change that mark, change that standard at some point, um, who's ever leading at, you know, among the cities. So, you know, is 75th just the minimum? Do we, do we need to strive for something higher to see where we really compare with these other cities? You can look at the total compensation packages, and I know they're compared to the average, but when you're 153, 143% ahead on some, we're probably at the 75th percentile on the total compensation packages, but somebody had said a couple of years ago, the 75th percentile is a state of mind. Does it really exist? What is it? How does it compare? Where do we, where do we fall in with our comparable five, six cities, whatever we're using now? So, is it better to look at a benchmark that's at 80% so that we do fall within that 75th moving forward, so that we don't continue to have these, um, adjustments two or three times a year? And that we know that we've, um, whatever we've negotiated is a contract that falls well within that range, and we're still not always trying to catch up. So, you know, the benchmark is 75, I get it, is that too low? I agree with what's been said about, you know, if we make the compensation adjustment now of the 1.1 million, we know that at some point next year during negotiations, that percentage will, will change. And, you know, something that was said earlier about generational changes, I, I don't look, I'm a boomer, I don't know that it's a whole lot different from when I was 20 or 30 years old. You know, I wasn't interested in healthcare at the time, I was healthy, invincible, whatever, you weren't looking at pensions, you were looking at what's in my pocket, what's jingling in my pocket. Uh, so, I, I think, I think it continues now, more may be said now because of what's, you know, what's out there on social media or whatever, but I don't know that we've changed all that much, but we do know this. We always strive to, uh, pay our employees where they should be paid, we know they work hard, we want to continue to get the best, and, um, and that, that should be our goal. So, that's it.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yes, uh, I spent a few hours going over the study, and it's, it's very in-depth, and, um, I appreciate all the work that went into it. It, it shows that, uh, our staff and, and our city manager and council really want to work on achieving the best goal for everyone. And, um, the only part that I would like to add that I didn't see was, when we do the comparables of the other cities, some of them cities are just trying to, uh, maintain, maybe I'm not, I'm trying, trying to think how I can express what I'm talking about. We're an organization that's growing rapidly, we're one of the cities in our, not just state of Florida, but in our country that's growing rapidly. So I think our, uh, I think our, uh, work in accumulating, uh, new employees and, and adding to our workforce is a, is a constant job for us, where some cities, that's not a constant job, if they don't have rapid growth, they're more about just maintaining their staff, they, so they have, uh, a different challenge than we have. Our, our challenge is different because of our rapid growth. So I don't know what can be added into the study, um, to decide if the whole 75% is, is the right goal. Maybe that has to be tweaked a little bit because we're different and because we're an organization that's growing at a rapid pace, so maybe there are s- some things that should be looked at a little differently. But, um, I feel very confident that we're heading in the right direction and that we're doing everything we can to, to, to look out for the people that work for, for the city. Thank you.
Yeah, and with the 75th percentile methodology, you know, what does that mean? That means you're striving to a certain point, but there's always going to be somebody that's going to beat you. There's always going to be that, that entity, who, whoever it may be, so you have to understand that. I think something else that we need to do when we really look at the data, um, and I know, I know the unions and, and staff, uh, agreed on certain municipalities that they were going to utilize, certain positions that we, they were going to look at, but I think also it's important to recognize whether, whatever timeframe you want to apply to it, a 45-minute, an hour drive time, because if you live here in the Cape or in close proximity to the Cape, you'll go to Fort Myers, you'll go to Lee County, you may even go over to Charlotte or down to Collier, you can be there within an hour. To me, that's really what you've got to focus, that's where you lose employees. For an employee to pick up and go to Port St. Lucie or to Fort Lauderdale, the chances of that happening is substantially lower, they're not going to go over there to make extra $5,000 probably, but they will surely drive across the bridge to Fort Myers, to Lee County, uh, because that's in close proximity to their home, they're not going to disrupt their family, their children, pull them out of school. So I think we have to make sure that, you know, when we're looking at this data, that we take that into consideration. You know, the old story, you got to keep up with the Joneses, or you're going to lose them, and we've already lost some. So that's important, you know, we may be beating or in the 75th percentile to some of these others, but let's look locally as well, because that's really who we're, who we're competing against. So I think that's important, looking at the data moving forward as well, uh, because that, that's who our competition is. So, Mr. City Manager, I see your light on, I guess, for me, do you have a recommendation? And, or do you, do you need anything, any direction from us?
First, I just wanted to kind of, uh, fill in some information from Councilmember Hayden's question, so the, the 75th being a state of mind, it, it's that, but it, it really is a statistical calculation that we would perform, that is performed, to basically, you punch in a, a number of data points, and you run a statistical analysis, and it says, okay, if you want to beat 75% of the data points coming in, this is the number you need to be at. The reason that, uh, the confidence level is used between 95 and 105, where they said that those would be black, anything over 105 would be blue, and anything lagging that would be red, is, is just for kind of what you were talking about. So there's going to be moments in time throughout the one, two, and three years where you could be blue one year because you're at 106, but then the next year, you're at 98, and then the third year, you're at, you're at 93. So you, you do kind of put a buffer, a confidence buffer, or corridor, as they called it, around that 75th, you're not, you know, you don't want to target just being right on it all the time, you want to, you have a little bit of a range between 80 and 70, is kind of where you, you target. I think, um, the mistake, I think, that, uh, organizations can make is, uh, as somebody said, you know, we, you hit the 75th percentile, and then you don't shift into maintenance mode. So you celebrate, you know, getting to the summit, and then you don't recognize, I got to lug all this gear back down, or I got to stay up here and this is where I'm going to live. And so what happens is, you start sending money to other areas, and you, you forget to make range adjustments to keep what you've got competitive in the market. And that's, I think that's some of what, you know, what we're experiencing this year and maybe some of last year. It's, it's a now or later type of discussion. If, if we didn't make the adjustment that you all directed us to do last year, we wouldn't be at 94%, we would probably be at 93 or 90%. So the, the, the further you slip behind, the number just gets, uh, more and more away from that 75th percentile. So it, it's a timing issue. How fast do you want to get there? And then how, how quick or, or how, uh, how much buffer do you want to put when you're there to either carry you through a three-year, two, a contract, a two-year contract? Or do you want to have, uh, maintenance cost of living adjustments in the contract so that once you're there, you can get through a three-year contract and be comfortable you're still in that corridor? So that's just some, some information to, to, to digest. My, my recommendation is this, it was the same as last year. I would like you to digest some of the data, you know, some of the information is, and data points are still going to, you know, come in, as, as Councilmember Steinke pointed out today, that, you know, okay, the, the benefits, it hit them where our average and the pay was at the 75th. There may be some nuances to this data as, as you explore it, that we, we may need to spend a little time, you know, explaining, but my, my recommendation is still, we, we are going to have to begin negotiations, uh, likely first quarter, uh, of next year. And so the whole point of getting this data was so that we can develop some, uh, negotiation strategies and, and develop, uh, I can get an understanding of what you all want to accomplish and where you want to be. So I intend on looking to set up a, um, a, a collective bargaining, a, a shade meeting to get some input from you all on where to go, because I, my goal is to be done with the contract and ratified long before October 1 hits. Uh, it's, it's been a, a practice that contracts lag way beyond, uh, you know, implementation date, and, you know, one of my goals this year is to, to make sure that does not happen. So what, what my recommendation is to, you know, develop your questions, develop the, the, an understanding of where you want to be, or ask the questions you want to know. One Council, Councilmember Shepard asked for, you know, one-on-one yesterday to kind of dig into the data. And then really, coming, coming right out of next month, uh, I'm going to ask for a shade meeting with you all to, to begin developing a, a settlement range, or, or get an understanding of where you all want to be and how fast. So that's, that's my recommendation, uh, at this time.
Uh, real quickly, before I go to Councilmember Steinke, Mr. City Manager, um, and it doesn't have to be, you know, that detailed binder, but very similar to like the presentation that, uh, that you presented today, and first, thank you, uh, you know, for bringing that information to us, I appreciate all your, your hard work to, to get that together for us. What I would like to see is, here's where we are now, and if we did a 3%, where's that going to take us? I think that would be some good information for all of us, to see, you know, black and white, here's where we are now, if we did a 3%, this is where we're going to be. So, just as, as, as an overview, if, do you think that, uh, you would be able to provide that type of, uh, um, you know, information for us? Okay, so, that would be helpful for me, uh, uh, going forward, then we can kind of analyze where, where that lands us, and then we can decide there, once we see that data, what our next steps are, and that'll probably, could take us into next month, you know, when we have that shade meeting you were talking about. Uh, Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you, just, uh, two points, one is, uh, obviously due across the board in those areas where, where we are, uh, in that 105, 104, that just kind of exacerbates that circumstance, and while no one likes to see someone get a raise, and they don't, um, just be careful, we don't keep widening the problem, if you will, by cross-the-board, uh, increases, but then, uh, and the other is, as we look at these, um, uh, peer cities, if you will, from the jingle-in-the-pocket standpoint, you know, and I don't know, but I'm just thinking, if I moved to Palm Bay and I make $5,000 more a year, there's a good chance it costs me $5,000 less a year to live there, and so really, it's a $10,000 difference jingling in my pocket. Conversely, for me to go to Naples, um, and I make $5,000 more, it may cost me $10,000 more to live there, so it actually costs me more, so it, it, I, I think in the competitiveness arena and the, and the, we want to be in the 75th percentile arena, I think we also have to look at what it takes to live where those dollars, uh, it will be expended, and certainly, we all know our housing situation in Cape Coral and what it takes to live here. Uh, and so I just think we also have to be at least cognizant of, uh, cost of living in these, in these comparisons, in these peers, and how that spread works.
The, uh, the economic differentials are included in the calculations in this document that would imply what you're talking about. You know, what's the, you know, what, what's the cost of living over here versus the cost of living over here, it's taken into account when you're dealing with the cost of labor associated with this, with this study.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, and I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I did want to, uh, along that same lines, uh, you had made some comments as well regarding, uh, employees leaving, so, you know, one of the things that, well, again, focus on, focusing on the recruitment and the retention, when you're set, setting a competitive, uh, wage and benefit package, uh, you're looking at, at both, right? So we, just in the last year, I mean, we have hired numerous employees from Sarasota County, one, uh, being a city attorney, but also middle management staff, we've hired employees fro- uh, from Miami Beach, you know, Arbus came over from Miami Beach. We're, we're, we're trying to set it to actually be the opposite of the concern of, of people leaving, we're trying to set it to be the attractor, to get the best in the industry here in Cape Coral. And then the retention part is looking at that mid-range, what are we doing to keep them here so that once we onboard them, they stay with us? And so it, when you're thinking about 75th, it's to actually not worry about people leaving to go somewhere else, it's to be the attractor, to be the, the place that people want to come to, because that is our philosophy in pay and, and wages.
Uh, Councilmember Cummings?
Thank you for saying that, so, that direction I was looking at too. Kind of what the mayor was saying, when I was looking to that, I was looking for the same thing, is where we are today in comparison with the other cities. Uh, my question is, if you do do this 3.25%, are we with Fort Myers? Are we still behind Fort Myers? Or are we in front of Fort Myers? It's the question.
And we, and we can do that calculation. If you'll recall, this is data collected at a, at a point in time, which was, you know, kind of discussed earlier, and so what we would want to do is age forward, not only your data, but what others may be doing in the meantime. So there's, there's some methodology to do that aging process that also looks at the market movement that's going on right now, too, there's some pretty good reports out from the American Compensation Association that can give you those projected movements.
Okay, because that's what I would like to see, um, in our area of where that would be, if we, even if we brought it up to the 3.25, so we can see, is this still going to be a problem, or are we going to do better? So I'm all about being better and being the model that people want to follow. So I'm all about being better and being the model that people wanna follow. Cape Coral should be the model people wanna follow. So, um, that's what I'm looking at and I would love to see that. So before the shade meeting, it would be great that we have that. Um, also, um, you know, you guys keep talking about the range adjustments. I, I think that's very, very important so we can see in each department where that would be at as well, um, knowing it's all a tier. So I don't wanna see this coming back next year and the year before. I'm with Councilman Long as well. Um, this should be something where we can try to fix the problem so this doesn't keep coming back. So the goal is, is how do we fix the problem so they grow as we grow? So I'm all for that as well. So if you have any ideas with that, Mike, that can help solve the problem immediately, I think we're all here as a whole want to solve the problem too. That would be great that, um, if you come up with an idea, would love to hear that in the future. So, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I kinda agree. I mean, if we can, we can get to the seventy-fifth percentile, then I think the burden of responsibility is with the unions, whichever union it is, in negotiating their three-year contract, that they stay within that seventy-fifth percentile. That's gotta be their goal. And that depends, uh, on them. What I don't wanna happen is a year goes by and then you hear, oh, but we didn't actually do that, we kinda failed at making sure we stay in that seventy-fifth percentile and they're back knocking on the door again. So I think that's, uh, very important. You know, we'll work hard to make sure we get you there. It's your responsibility in your negotiations to make sure you stay there. And, uh, so that's the message that I have. Um, you know, that, that responsibility is their responsibility. I don't see any other lights on, um, any other discussion. Mr. City Manager, you got the direction you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, uh, for, uh, Seagull Waters, appreciate your presentation and we look further, uh, forward to the other information that we requested as well.
Thank you so much.
Okay, uh, item B two, uh, today, uh, this, on the agenda is proposed naming of the fire department training facility and new fireboat. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before, uh, Fire Chief Lamb, uh, goes over the actual presentation of the item, uh, or two items that are, are gonna be before the council, I was asked by a councilmember to kinda go over the policy that's in place today, uh, for the, for the community and for the council that kinda set the stage of, you know, why we're here, what are the, what are the analyses that go into, uh, bringing an item like this forward? And so I'd like to do that now. So, um, in the city code, um, section, Article Nine in Administration is a, a section called Naming of Assets. And, uh, it lays out a, a purpose, which is to establish uniform guidelines for naming and renaming of public assets. There's a set of definitions, but city assets typically, uh, or as defined are all public facilities, including but not limited to parks and recreation facilities operated and, um, controlled by the city of Cape Coral. Um, this is going to, what we're gonna hear today is gonna, uh, fall into the, but not limited to, um, but a lot of the, uh, information in this was kinda geared towards, uh, parks, but it does encompass, uh, other city assets. There are some, uh, naming goals that are outlined in the policy. Um, those include the following, whether the proposed name engenders a strong positive image, whether the proposed name is appropriate having regard to the site's location, whether the proposed name has historical, cultural, or social significance for future generations, whether the proposed name commemorates places, people, or events that are of continued importance to the city, region, state, or nation, whether the proposed name has symbolic value that transcends ordinary meaning or use, as well as enhancing the character of the site, and whether the proposed name has broad public support. Then as far as picking the names, uh, there are a, a couple of considerations outlined that should be considered. Those include the context and geographic location of the site, the nature or geological features, uh, included, historic events or places. Uh, the following is outstanding individuals and the ones that are gonna be before you today are being brought forward under that, um, uh, that, uh, criteria, which is naming a city asset for an outstanding individual is allowed posthumously at least six months since the date of passing and where that person's significance and good reputation have been accepted in the city, states, or nation's history. When considering naming a, a city asset after a person, uh, consideration will be given when the person was exceptionally dedicated or demonstrated excellence in service in ways that made significant contributions to the community, the city of Cape Coral, the state, uh, or the United States. And then it includes the person volunteered or gave extraordinary help or care to individuals, the person risked his or her life to save or protect others, that is gonna be the case in, in this regard, and the person demonstrated commitment to equity, inclusion, and, and justice. And then there was one other consideration, uh, not on the, on the, uh, real, uh, real persons, but there's one for donations. If the city has benefited, uh, from the generosity, uh, from somebody who's been philanthropic, that's another, uh, category you can, can put them forward. And so, uh, lastly, I will just mention that there, there is a designation method. The, the city attorney at the direction of council shall prepare an ordinance for council's consideration in the official naming of an asset. So where we sit today, uh, as we go through this presentation, uh, there's been an application, um, and some letters of some, uh, support by the family members, uh, surviving, uh, the deceased, uh, for these, um, the, the department, uh, through, through my office, these applications come through the city man or their designee. Uh, we have put together a memo that, uh, attaches to each one of these, um, naming of assets, um, to go through both the policy goals and the criteria and the considerations outlined. Uh, both of them, uh, I'm comfortable saying, and, and the fire chief is saying, meet the criteria, uh, for the namings proposed. And with that, um, I'm going to turn it over to Fire Chief Lamb to give the presentation on the individuals and the assets.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief. Um, here today to talk again, as the city manager mentioned, about the naming of, uh, new fireboat and the fire department training facility in honor of a couple of our past So to be clear, the, um, request today is, uh, have a consensus from council to direct the city attorney, uh, to, to, to prepare two separate ordinances for the naming of these two assets. That is, uh, per the city ordinance is the process that would need to be followed if council desired to pursue this action today. Again, would be to direct the city attorney to direct, um, to create two separate ordinances for this. So this, uh, effort honors two of our firefighters who recognized by the state of Florida and the International Association of Firefighters as line of duty deaths, um, for their, their time, service, and commitment to the city. Um, we've put this out through social media, news press, and the breeze. Uh, we've had nothing but, uh, public support for, for this. We've also got, uh, letters of support from, uh, the widow of one and the parents of, of the other. So talking specifically about those, first up is Engineer Michael Camello Jr. and having our new fire department training facility named in his honor. Uh, again, Michael, uh, was recognized as a line of duty death. He passed away in twenty eighteen. Um, Michael had a big passion for training. He was an instructor, uh, an FTO for our department, an instructor at the academy, taught our, our CERT program. And so we thought it would be fitting to have, uh, this facility in his honor, recognizing his passion for training. Next is Engineer James Gunter. Uh, he passed away in twenty twenty, uh, after his retirement, but under the Florida firefighter cancer bill, was recognized as a occupational-related cancer. Uh, the, he worked a lot of his career up at Station Seven near Burnstone Marina, uh, was a Matt Lachey, um, native resident and spent a lot of time out on those waterways, was instrumental in our marine team. And so we thought, again, this would be a fitting thing for him to have, uh, his legacy out on our waterways once again. One other one that's not mentioned in here because it's not a city asset, but, uh, retired Lieutenant Michelle Corr was also recognized as a line of duty. And we're gonna do the breakfast with Santa event that we do with foster kids in her honor, um, because she was a foster mother and one of the things she was proud of. But this would make all of the recent line of duty deaths that are recognized by our city, um, have something in their, their honors to make sure that their legacy is not forgotten by especially our new members and, uh, members of our community as well. Any questions?
Open it up for any discussion. I guess the, uh, uh, direction you're looking for today is to get, uh, a consensus to move forward with the naming of those assets. Mr. City, uh, Manager?
Yes, correct. Under, uh, city code section two dash one sixty-six, uh, G, the city attorney at the direction of city council shall prepare an ordinance for council consideration in official naming or renaming of a city asset. So we're requesting, uh, per that policy, the direction be given today to, uh, my counterpart or my, uh, city attorney to prepare these two ordinances to bring back for actual adoption.
Okay, I'll support that. Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you. Um, uh, just first, uh, uh, thank you, City Manager, for, uh, letting everyone know that this is a serious consideration. There are specific guidelines that are required, um, and it's, it's not, uh, an act that's taken or undertaken lightly. So thank you for doing that. Uh, and I would also, based on the qualifications and the history presented, uh, speak in favor of it as well.
Okay. Any other comments, uh, councilmember Cummings?
I'm in agreement. So, thank you.
They're good. Yep. Looks like they got all of this. Thank you, Chief. Uh, it's ten twenty, why don't we take a ten-minute break and come back at ten thirty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna have a presentation today. So when we last met on the Cape Coral Yacht Club in January, we had a series of presentations and a lengthy discussion on the amount of damage that was in the yacht club to the facilities and the infrastructure. We got consensus to move forward with basically rejuvenating or rebuilding the center part, which previously had not been part of the scope of the project at the yacht club. But thanks or no thanks to Hurricane Ian, that scope has grown. Today's presentation is going to be a result of what we saw back in January, where council had directed us to look at expanding the parking garage, kind of shifting the Harbor Master building. So there's kind of like a marina north side and then from the marina south, there was another concept plan that the council liked as far as the way that a building and a second restaurant laid out. So the presentation today is going to merge those two. We're gonna look to get some consensus from you all on which one to utilize for the horizontal application, the site plan. And then we intend on coming back to you after hiatus to discuss the building itself, the ballroom and more of a, you know, convention center, in order to include the programming from the senior center and the ballroom kind of all in one. We'll look at vertical finishes and building finishes so that at that point, the architects will have both the site layout horizontally and then the elements of design for the vertical so we can actually begin designing the overall project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul in Capital Improvements to begin the discussion.
Thank you. Good morning. Paul Clean, Director, Capital Improvements. I'll be turning this over to James Pankton from Kimley Horn and he'll be giving the presentation and providing those concepts for discussion and then there'll be questions and input afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Good morning, Mayor, Council. For the record, James Pankton with Kimley Horn and Associates. We've got a brief presentation today. We have prepared a couple of concepts out. As Mike said, we want to get some feedback and discussion on. Very excited about these, so look forward to any questions and discussion items that you have. Just as a recap, in late January at the council winter retreat, we did present a number of options. We presented five different program diagrams. As was kind of recapped here before, council directed us to look at kind of further studying Options A and Option E, which you'll see on the next slide. Lot of similarities in terms of the options but, and a lot of, you know, change from the existing plan. By relooking at the upland portion of the site and looking at where the buildings were and remaster planning that, we were able to accomplish a number of things. One was to really kind of expand the beach and the beach amenities and tie that back into the site by not having vehicular access kind of cutting through the beach and the upland portion where the community center currently is. It allows us to kind of integrate the site a lot more. And in doing that, we've kind of pushed the vehicular access to what is the east and the north part of that peninsula on this diagram here and all the diagrams that you'll see, the north is to the right. So we've kind of pushed the vehicular access to the east and north. And then we've also were able to expand the pedestrian access because we weren't tied to the existing roadway as we had been in the previously approved master plan. So Diagram E, at the center of the upland site there is the community center in a fairly similar location to where it is today. We've changed the orientation a bit to kind of capture some sunset views. Between the community center then and the beach, we had talked about a resort-style pool and then layering in a lot of the same amenities that were approved on the previous master plan, such as play areas, upland landscape and kind of garden-type areas, pathways, different surfaces for visitors to the beach. We also looked at doing an additional restaurant option just to the south of the parking garage. You can see in kind of the circle there. We looked at, one of the main things on this concept too is looking at the realignment of Driftwood Parkway and shifting that to the north, taking away the direct access that you currently have. That would allow for some additional stormwater expansion, which also allows us to do some landscaping, which would help to further soften that parking garage. On the kind of marina portion of the peninsula, the Harbor Master was in the same location on this concept as the previously approved master plan and then we had some flexible lawn space. The boat trailer parking area and the rest of the marina design remained consistent with what was in the approved master plan previously. Also, the boathouse restaurant and the fuel dock is in the same location as it was as well. We had explored a second pier on the top of the image. There was some discussion about potentially even a restaurant out there or shade structure. I think that certainly warrants some further discussion. There's some, you know, permitting restrictions that would be associated with that. I think there's also some economic considerations that the city would need to do as far as does a pier, a restaurant on the pier in that location make sense given the other restaurants on the upland portions of the site. So in kind of recap, that was Diagram A. Diagram number, or E, that we looked at also had similar program elements. The main difference being the parking garage in this concept was kind of turned into an L, which allowed us to expand parking, again, take some of the surface parking away and cluster that into the garage and try to tuck the parking up into that location. If you look at the community center in this location, that slid down a little bit from where it was in the previous image. But again, both concepts here had enhanced pedestrian connectivity all the way from the Harbor Master through the Marina Basin, all the way to the boathouse restaurant, the fuel dock location, and then through the rest of the site, the beach, et cetera. This concept also showed a second restaurant in a fairly similar location to what the previous Concept A showed as well. So, open lawns, mix of seating spaces for people on the beach. Remember, one of the things that we heard during the initial master plan was people like to go to the beach, but not always be in the sand. So in all the concepts that we've done, we've tried to provide beach access, lawn access, decking access, a number of different surfaces for people to enjoy. This concept then also showed kind of a reduction in the surface parking, again, pushing that into the garage. So looking at Options A and E, we've kind of hit the drawing boards and studied what those would look like in terms of developing more detail. Ultimately, the goal again is getting to the level of detail that we presented and was approved previously and then engineering and construction documents. But Concept 1 that you see here is probably most similar to Diagram A that we just looked at previously. But I'll just kind of walk you through the site from the right side of the image down to the beach area. So this concept shows the Driftwood Parkway access is the same as it is today. As you're driving down Driftwood, looking out towards the water, you have a nice view of landscape as your foreground and then in this case, maybe a smaller pier with a shade structure that kind of frames that view. As you come into the site, we've got our parking garage that's been expanded. We're estimating about 500 spaces in this configuration as opposed to roughly 305 as we had in the approved master plan. The Harbor Master building has slid down towards the boat ramp. Between the Harbor Master and the parking garage is a small surface lot that would provide, you know, police parking and kind of emergency services or quick, maybe quick-trip parking, but not long-stay parking. The boat trailer parking to the right is generally as it is in the approved master plan. We're not proposing really changes to that. And then the whole boat ramp configuration and circulation area is the same as well. We had a lot of coordination with the Redfish HOA during the initial master plan. So the intent would be to make sure that we provide that same amount of landscape buffering and screening from the canal view across the canal into the boat ramp area. The picture that you see might represent that a little bit light in terms of the amount of landscape, but the intent would certainly be that we provide that same amount of screening. As we continue to come down, Driftwood Parkway, you can see my mouse, okay. We've got stormwater area here, much as you have today. Today, that serves as stormwater as well as some overflow parking. We're showing this as an enhanced stormwater pond. We've got our lawn area here with shade structures, again, providing that different waterfront seating surface that people have asked for. As we move into the site, this is the location of a proposed second restaurant. We're showing about 6,700 square feet in this location, so that's under roof and then there's some outdoor decking, kind of outdoor dining space as well, which has a really nice view of the waterfront. Some minor surface parking that serves the restaurant for maybe a valet drop-off, again, as well as ADA parking close to the restaurant and close to the new configuration of the community center here. Moving down the site further, just as we had before, we've got a playground for children right on the waterfront. So that's a really nice activity. Sidewalk or boardwalk that runs the entire perimeter of the beachfront and connects that down to the boathouse restaurant area. The expanded beach that you see here in Number 4. And then kind of getting into the heart of the site, we've shown an expanded community center. In this configuration here, the total square footage is about 35,000 to 40,000 square feet. The total square foot that you have today between the Rotino Center and the existing ballroom and ballroom annex is about 21,000 square feet. So if you recall some of the discussions that we had earlier in the year, we talked about maybe expanding that ballroom and providing multiple uses that could happen within that ballroom at the same time. So this expanded footprint certainly allows for that activity. At the front of the, well, I say front, on this side of the building, we do have a portcasser drop-off, much like you have today. We're showing maybe a recreation of that historical fountain again as a site feature that kind of ties back to the current site. Given the location of the building within the site, there's really not necessarily a front and a back. So the building will be designed to really have four sides or multiple sides so that you don't have, you know, just an ugly service core on one side of the building. Will certainly accommodate service and drop-off needs, but it'll be thoughtfully designed so that it's presentable from all facades. As you come down further into the site, we've got a little bit of surface parking. In total, we're showing about 72 spaces of surface parking. The approved master plan that was done previously had about 168 spaces. So again, we've shifted a lot of that surface parking into the garage to create more usable space from a park-upland standpoint. Coming down towards the boathouse restaurant, we would have, again, a vehicular drop-off area as well as delivery and service drop-off. And of course, we've got our fuel tank down here, so we need to accommodate fuel truck delivery and refilling of the tank in that location as well. By not keeping the same road that we currently have, we were able to pick up a few more feet. So we've got expanded pedestrian zone along the waterfront on the east side here, again, the bottom of the screen, and then also on the north side of this peninsula. So expanded pedestrian zone, not only for boat users, but also people just traversing the site. That also allowed us to get more landscape buffering in this area from the canal, looking into the site and the vehicular area as well. So at the core of the site, we're showing this large resort-style pool. If you've been to any kind of current resort or Margaritaville-type atmosphere, that's the sort of place that we envisioned with cabanas and landscaping, lots of lounge chairs. And that serves as a nice kind of interaction between the riverfront, the sandy beach, the upland area, and then transitioning up to the community center. So really nice views from the community center, across the pool into the river, and a lot of really nice landscaped, you know, gathering spaces within that pool deck area. The pool that we're showing in this location is about, about, I'm sorry, 15,000 square feet. That's compared to about 6,000 square feet of the pool that you have today. So we've kind of maxed it out in this area. It doesn't have to be that big. There's certainly some areas that we could, you know, look at shaving off, but it is fairly comparable to what you see at a lot of different resort developments. With that, I'll move on to the second concept. Programmatically, a lot of the same features, just in some slightly different locations and some other adjustments that we've made for reasons that I'll talk through. But as we look over at the boat trailer parking area and the boat ramp, again, this is largely the same as what we just viewed. The Harbor Master and the service parking for that is in the same location. We're showing the same footprint for the garage, so an expansion of about, from about 305 spaces to 500 in this configuration. And then as we move to the top of the page, that's where we start to see some of the main differences here. In this location or in this scenario, the Driftwood Parkway would be realigned, as you see here. That allows us to bring that stormwater a little closer to the building and provide more landscape buffering that I mentioned when we looked at the diagram earlier in the presentation. The connections up here on Dolphin Drive to the residences above are in the same locations as they are today. We've really just kind of repurposed the alignment of Driftwood Parkway, brought that stormwater closer to the building, which allows us to do a little more landscaping in that area. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul in Capital Improvements to begin the discussion.
Thank you. Good morning. Paul Clean, Director, Capital Improvements. I'll be turning this over to James Pankton from Kimley Horn and he'll be giving the presentation and providing those concepts for discussion. And then there'll be questions and input afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Good morning, Mayor, Council. For the record, James Pankton with Kimley Horn and Associates. We've got a brief presentation today. We have prepared a couple of concepts out. As Mike said, we want to get some feedback and discussion on. Very excited about these, so look forward to any questions and discussion items that you have. Just as a recap, in late January at the council winter retreat, we did present a number of options. We presented five different program diagrams. As was kind of recapped here before, council directed us to look at kind of further studying Options A and Option E, which you'll see on the next slide. Lot of similarities in terms of the options, but, and a lot of, you know, change from the existing plan. By relooking at the upland portion of the site and looking at where the buildings were and remaster planning that, we were able to accomplish a number of things. One was to really kind of expand the beach and the beach amenities and tie that back into the site by not having vehicular access kind of cutting through the beach and the upland portion where the community center currently is. It allows us to kind of integrate the site a lot more. And in doing that, we've kind of pushed the vehicular access to what is the east and the north part of that peninsula on this diagram here and all the diagrams that you'll see, the north is to the right. So we've kind of pushed the vehicular access to the east and north. And then we've also were able to expand the pedestrian access because we weren't tied to the existing roadway as we had been in the previously approved master plan. So Diagram E, at the center of the upland site there is the community center in a fairly similar location to where it is today. We've changed the orientation a bit to kind of capture some sunset views. Between the community center then and the beach, we had talked about a resort-style pool and then layering in a lot of the same amenities that were approved on the previous master plan, such as play areas, upland landscape and kind of garden-type areas, pathways, different surfaces for visitors to the beach. We also looked at doing an additional restaurant option just to the south of the parking garage. You can see in kind of the circle there. We looked at, one of the main things on this concept too is looking at the realignment of Driftwood Parkway and shifting that to the north, taking away the direct access that you currently have. That would allow for some additional stormwater expansion, which also allows us to do some landscaping, which would help to further soften that parking garage. On the kind of marina portion of the peninsula, the Harbor Master was in the same location on this concept as the previously approved master plan and then we had some flexible lawn space. The boat trailer parking area and the rest of the marina design remained consistent with what was in the approved master plan previously. Also, the boathouse restaurant and the fuel dock is in the same location as it was as well. We had explored a second pier on the top of the image. There was some discussion about potentially even a restaurant out there or shade structure. I think that certainly warrants some further discussion. There's some, you know, permitting restrictions that would be associated with that. I think there's also some economic considerations that the city would need to do as far as does a pier, a restaurant on the pier in that location make sense given the other restaurants on the upland portions of the site. So in kind of recap, that was Diagram A. Diagram number, or E, that we looked at also had similar program elements. The main difference being the parking garage in this concept was kind of turned into an L, which allowed us to expand parking, again, take some of the surface parking away and cluster that into the garage and try to tuck the parking up into that location. If you look at the community center in this location, that slid down a little bit from where it was in the previous image. But again, both concepts here had enhanced pedestrian connectivity all the way from the Harbor Master through the Marina Basin, all the way to the boathouse restaurant, the fuel dock location, and then through the rest of the site, the beach, et cetera. This concept also showed a second restaurant in a fairly similar location to what the previous Concept A showed as well. So, open lawns, mix of seating spaces for people on the beach. Remember, one of the things that we heard during the initial master plan was people like to go to the beach, but not always be in the sand. So in all the concepts that we've done, we've tried to provide beach access, lawn access, decking access, a number of different surfaces for people to enjoy. This concept then also showed kind of a reduction in the surface parking, again, pushing that into the garage. So looking at Options A and E, we've kind of hit the drawing boards and studied what those would look like in terms of developing more detail. Ultimately, the goal again is getting to the level of detail that we presented and was approved previously and then engineering and construction documents. But Concept 1 that you see here is probably most similar to Diagram A that we just looked at previously. But I'll just kind of walk you through the site from the right side of the image down to the beach area. So this concept shows the Driftwood Parkway access is the same as it is today. As you're driving down Driftwood, looking out towards the water, you have a nice view of landscape as your foreground and then in this case, maybe a smaller pier with a shade structure that kind of frames that view. As you come into the site, we've got our parking garage that's been expanded. We're estimating about 500 spaces in this configuration as opposed to roughly 305 as we had in the approved master plan. The Harbor Master building has slid down towards the boat ramp. Between the Harbor Master and the parking garage is a small surface lot that would provide, you know, police parking and kind of emergency services or quick, maybe quick-trip parking, but not long-stay parking. The boat trailer parking to the right is generally as it is in the approved master plan. We're not proposing really changes to that. And then the whole boat ramp configuration and circulation area is the same as well. We had a lot of coordination with the Redfish HOA during the initial master plan. So the intent would be to make sure that we provide that same amount of landscape buffering and screening from the canal view across the canal into the boat ramp area. The picture that you see might represent that a little bit light in terms of the amount of landscape, but the intent would certainly be that we provide that same amount of screening. As we continue to come down, Driftwood Parkway, you can see my mouse, okay. We've got stormwater area here, much as you have today. Today, that serves as stormwater as well as some overflow parking. We're showing this as an enhanced stormwater pond. We've got our lawn area here with shade structures, again, providing that different waterfront seating surface that people have asked for. As we move into the site, this is the location of a proposed second restaurant. We're showing about 6,700 square feet in this location, so that's under roof and then there's some outdoor decking, kind of outdoor dining space as well, which has a really nice view of the waterfront. Some minor surface parking that serves the restaurant for maybe a valet drop-off, again, as well as ADA parking close to the restaurant and close to the new configuration of the community center here. Moving down the site further, just as we had before, we've got a playground for children right on the waterfront. So that's a really nice activity. Sidewalk or boardwalk that runs the entire perimeter of the beachfront and connects that down to the boathouse restaurant area. The expanded beach that you see here in Number 4. And then kind of getting into the heart of the site, we've shown an expanded community center. In this configuration here, the total square footage is about 35,000 to 40,000 square feet. The total square foot that you have today between the Rotino Center and the existing ballroom and ballroom annex is about 21,000 square feet. So if you recall some of the discussions that we had earlier in the year, we talked about maybe expanding that ballroom and providing multiple uses that could happen within that ballroom at the same time. So this expanded footprint certainly allows for that activity. At the front of the, well, I say front, on this side of the building, we do have a portcasser drop-off, much like you have today. We're showing maybe a recreation of that historical fountain again as a site feature that kind of ties back to the current site. Given the location of the building within the site, there's really not necessarily a front and a back. So the building will be designed to really have four sides or multiple sides so that you don't have, you know, just an ugly service core on one side of the building. Will certainly accommodate service and drop-off needs, but it'll be thoughtfully designed so that it's presentable from all facades. As you come down further into the site, we've got a little bit of surface parking. In total, we're showing about 72 spaces of surface parking. The approved master plan that was done previously had about 168 spaces. So again, we've shifted a lot of that surface parking into the garage to create more usable space from a park-upland standpoint. Coming down towards the boathouse restaurant, we would have, again, a vehicular drop-off area as well as delivery and service drop-off. And of course, we've got our fuel tank down here, so we need to accommodate fuel truck delivery and refilling of the tank in that location as well. By not keeping the same road that we currently have, we were able to pick up a few more feet. So we've got expanded pedestrian zone along the waterfront on the east side here, again, the bottom of the screen, and then also on the north side of this peninsula. So expanded pedestrian zone, not only for boat users, but also people just traversing the site. That also allowed us to get more landscape buffering in this area from the canal, looking into the site and the vehicular area as well. So at the core of the site, we're showing this large resort-style pool. If you've been to any kind of current resort or Margaritaville-type atmosphere, that's the sort of place that we envisioned with cabanas and landscaping, lots of lounge chairs. And that serves as a nice kind of interaction between the riverfront, the sandy beach, the upland area, and then transitioning up to the community center. So really nice views from the community center, across the pool into the river, and a lot of really nice landscaped, you know, gathering spaces within that pool deck area. The pool that we're showing in this location is about, about, I'm sorry, 15,000 square feet. That's compared to about 6,000 square feet of the pool that you have today. So we've kind of maxed it out in this area. It doesn't have to be that big. There's certainly some areas that we could, you know, look at shaving off, but it is fairly comparable to what you see at a lot of different resort developments. With that, I'll move on to the second concept. Programmatically, a lot of the same features, just in some slightly different locations and some other adjustments that we've made for reasons that I'll talk through. But as we look over at the boat trailer parking area and the boat ramp, again, this is largely the same as what we just viewed. The Harbor Master and the service parking for that is in the same location. We're showing the same footprint for the garage, so an expansion of about, from about 305 spaces to 500 in this configuration. And then as we move to the top of the page, that's where we start to see some of the main differences here. In this location or in this scenario, the Driftwood Parkway would be realigned, as you see here. but still a very nice resort-style pool, maybe with zero entry and some submerged benches, and still a rather significant increase in size compared to what you have today. Just adjacent to that, we're showing another restaurant location, again with some outdoor dining that you see on the decking there. That ties into the site boardwalk and hardscape that, again, connects all the beachfront activities to the rest of the site. Again, this concept provides a mix of surfaces for beachfront visitors, from sand to grass to boardwalk to hardscape. So, I think we've accommodated that request in all these concepts. We're showing the beachfront restaurant... Sorry, beachfront restroom in this location. Again, shade structures mixed throughout, areas for wedding lawns, and that's something I neglected to mention in this concept, but we do have open lawn area here that people could utilize for weddings or special events as kind of outdoor space right adjacent to the building. And we're showing a similar function for those types of spaces adjacent to the community center in this concept as well. The playground is shifted a bit to the east in this concept, and you can see that here. But, again, largely the same program features as what we have in the approved concept and what we presented previously, just in some slightly different shapes. So, the main differences is being size of pool and type of pool and look and feel. This one having a slightly more expanded marina, kind of hardscape, boardwalk adjacent to the marina. Reconfiguration of Driftwood Parkway here and the enhanced stormwater. But both concepts, again, include the same parking deck. We're showing the same Harbor Master Building as we previously have designed. So, that would be just kind of shifting the location. And then, the same goes for the beachfront restroom as well. So, with that, we'd like to talk about, you know, next steps. We will open up for questions, but from the next step standpoint, we'd like to get input and feedback on the concepts. If you prefer one versus the other, or would like us to look in a different direction, we'd like to get that feedback from you. We would then want to go back for public meeting. We anticipate getting your feedback, refining one of the concepts, and then presenting that for additional feedback at the public meeting. And then, that would become then the master plan that we present to you for future approval. As I mentioned, we are working on the building design, and we'll be coming back to look at that in more detail along with the revised concept per your direction today. But with that, we'd like to open up to any questions and comments that you have.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I like Concept One. I'll put that on the screen. I think that's an awesome design. My only fear is we have nothing like this in the city. And when this is done, I believe the draw is going to be a lot bigger than what the yacht club used to be. So, my concerns are parking. And I like that we expanded the parking in this design. I was at the tiki at the yacht club Monday night with my family, and with the parking that was available, there was no more parking. And that's what all the other enemy, excuse me, not even being open. My only question that I have is, is Building 13, do we think that the amount of square footage there is necessary for that type of operation? I've been to other marinas, and I've seen some that had really too much square footage that wasn't utilized. And I've seen ones operate very well with a lot less square footage. I don't know the answer. I'm not in that business. So, I just question, is that an immense amount of square footage that is really needed? Because what I want to really focus on is that we look at, what are the most popular reasons for people going there? And make sure that that impact has the right amount of services. And I believe the atmosphere that we're creating for families is going to draw a lot of families there. My other question is, I believe, location number five is a second restaurant. I'm not really opposed to a second location for food, but what I'm interested in is something totally different than what we have. And what I mean by that is more of a smaller establishment that services to people at the beach and the pool. For people that want just quick drinks and maybe light things, like a quick sandwich or something like that, not really a restaurant like what we have now. And I'm no, in no way an expert in that business, but when I was there Monday night, to me, and it's only my opinion, it seems like they're not really designed to maintain the beach business or the pool business, meaning the people that are using them to locations. So, I like the idea of maybe that location number five being more as walk-up type establishments that you walk up to a counter and get something quick if you're at the pool or at the beach. And then, my other concern was with location 16. The busiest time of the year for the yacht, for this product that's before us, is going to be in the winter, most likely, in season. We'll have even more traffic, and that'll be dry. Is there a way of constructing that where it can be additional parking when possible? I don't know. I'm not an engineer. But is it a way to multipurpose that area so that it could be for drainage and possible overflow parking? So, that's all my concerns. I think Concept One is awesome. I think this will be a tremendous asset to the city when it's completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stinky.
Thank you. I am in favor of a hybrid. I think there's component parts of each one of them that have their merits. And in each one, I think certain areas are better than the other. And so, I'll just share a few of those comments and where we go with it. I'll just go top to bottom. I think the stormwater, the water retention, I prefer the road bending around that, having the water in so that as you enter the park area, you're looking at that landscaped area with the water retention and that you bend around it. I prefer the longer pier and, if you will, fishing deck on the end. In the second one, the, if you're going to fish from that pier, it gets you further out into the water instead of fishing, you know, right there by where the people are, the beachgoers are in the shallows. A little bit of a concern, love the resort pool in, on Slide Four. Concern there is that we have many current residents that have used the park and the swimming pool they're in for exercise and having lane swimming. And so, while the free-form resort-style pool is awesome, and I like that for resort, I think, in my opinion, I think that we should cater to some of our current residents that use the park for health and fitness and provide some type of pool design that will allow for some lane swimming. But I absolutely believe in having the whole pool in one body of water, if you will, with that shallow end toward the bottom, so that you'd have the children's section. I'm not so much in favor, in the second one, of separating the children's pool, where you have to get out of one and move over and get into another. I like having them contiguous like it's in that first one. As far as the Harbor Master, I would agree with Councilman Shepherd from the standpoint of how big do we really need that to be? Although, I do want to bring to light that we've had an organization since 2012, the Southwest Florida Yacht Club, that called the yacht club home. And the hurricane has pushed them out. They now operate in Fort Myers, and they have requested that they would be considered as far as having some type of space to operate out of, whether that would be space within the Harbor Master quarters, if you will, or somehow leasable within building number one on Slide Four. So, I'd like for them to be considered as this design occurs and making sure that we have a home for them as, you know, one of our local marine participants. From the very start, I was concerned, being here a long, long time. I played tennis at the yacht club very regularly, and we have a great number of residents that bought their homes in that area for proximity to tennis. And while there are other tennis courts available within our city, a large reason why they live where they live was jump on their bicycle and go down and play tennis. So, I realize we only have so much of a footprint to work with, and in conversations with staff and some thinking out of the box, in my travels, I've played tennis on the roof of hotels and the roof of parking structures. And so, I'm very much in favor of the parking garage. And the L-shaped parking garage certainly makes good use of that area and for the parking that's going to be needed. But what I would advocate for is that we cover that parking garage, and we look at the opportunity to put the tennis courts and maybe a couple pickleball courts on the roof. There's, you just got to go online and Google, you know, rooftop tennis courts, and you'll see some amazing, amazing designs all over the country. And so, I'd recommend that we use that space in a vertical manner that our folks that live in that area still get the opportunity to play tennis, pickleball. One of the things that I recommended is that, you know, we have surveyed that area of our city before as it relates to wants and needs. And it certainly wouldn't hurt to put a survey out to say, hey, if we were going to put a few tennis courts, would we put three, four, two pickleball courts, whatever? Whatever that rooftop would accommodate, you know, comfortably, dimensionally? I think we get some custom, our citizen input on what type of facility that we could put on the roof to supply their recreational needs there. And the other thing that just concerned me a little bit is where our boat launch is, it appears that we can launch four at a time. Is that what that's designed for, is four lanes? And so, as people are waiting to get their boat trailers and back them into the water and put their boat on, where are they going to put their boats? And then, conversely, when they're launching their boats, are they just leaving the boat sitting there in the ramp area while they go park their trailer and then walk back? And so, kind of the ingress egress, if you would, of that. And I noticed that we've not put any, you know, finger piers to, the way we're looking at it, to the west of those launches, actually to the south. But I'm just concerned about where the boats wait to get onto their, onto their trailer, and when they're being dropped in the water, where they sit while the person goes and parks their trailer. And other than that, that's all my feedback. I think it's fabulous. I think, you know... The one other thing that kind of concerned me a little bit is where the restrooms, definitely a different restroom placement. On the first slide, number 20, it's all the way down to the south, you know, right there by the boathouse. That's a long walk for people that are up at the, you know, what would be the west side of the beach there. I like the way it's placed in the second depiction better. It's more centrally located on the beach, so a little more, you know, easier on the people to get to and from the restroom as they use the beach. Other than that, fabulous design. I love the idea of a two-story community center to have an enhanced view over the resort-style pool out to the water. So, I think it's great work. But I, for me, I wouldn't pick Concept One or Concept Two. I would take the best of each one of those, and I'd make a hybrid.
Okay. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. I like Concept One. And kind of going off of what Councilman Stinky was saying about the rooftop, I thought we talked about that in our retreat, basically stating using the rooftop for pickleball, tennis, including wedding venues. So, I was hoping that concept was going to be in here because I'm in agreement with that, use that space. The bathrooms, I'm in agreement with Stinky as well. Kind of taking number two and putting it at number one because I was looking at that, you've got that pier, you have everything down there. It would be a long walk. And you would have the restaurant people, the restaurants, the bathrooms are going to be close by them anyway. So, if we go into... Section Two and changing into, Concept Two into Concept One, I do agree as well with the longer pier in Section One versus what's in Section Two, putting it in Section One. I like the resort-style pool. And I understand that, you know, you wanted to keep the other, the pool there for the residents to do swimming. Now, I don't know if this could be done or not, but where the, where your stormwater is, I don't know if you could turn that into a pool so they could still have their pool for swimming every day. I don't know if that could be done or not. But I like Section One, just a few little changes. But I thought in our retreat, we talked about the rooftop, adding the tennis, pickleball, maybe even a wedding venue. So, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mayor. I also like Concept One. The wraparound parking garage is a must. Actually, I'd much rather see an extra floor on the parking garage than I would pickleball or tennis there. I think we're building a fantastic new tennis facility at Lake Kennedy and state-of-the-art courts. And I think that'll be great for anybody that wants to play tennis that isn't that far from where people live right now. So, I don't know that 500 parking spaces is going to be enough. That's a concern. I know you've got maybe 70 other parking spaces around the complex, but as Councilmember Shepherd said, this is going to be an incredibly popular venue location with so much going on. Couple restaurants, several events going on in the community center, the pool, the only one in the city, people using their boats. I don't think we have enough parking. And if that can be accommodated in the parking garage, then I think we need to look at that. I do like, in Concept Two, the extended pier over the other one. The resort-style pool is fine with me. I think the configuration might be adjusted so that people can swim laps if they need to. Yes, the restroom should probably be more centrally located. The entrance to the community center would be in relation to where everything is, closer to where the marina side, right? Not the beach side?
Correct.
And that's where... And I like the idea of somehow recreating the fountain in Concept One that was there before. And I think the expanded community center allowing for more events to take place there with smaller event rooms, plus the ballroom, will be an incredible strength for this facility. I would also like to see a portion of that dedicated inside there to memorialize the original yacht club with pictures and other things that we've talked about. You know, we talked about bringing the doors over from the old building into that one. But I think somewhere in there needs to be some sort of a smaller museum dedicated to the history of what's happened there in the previous 60, 61 years. But I like the straight-in approach rather than taking the road around the retention pond better. You know, the playground area where it is in Concept One, I think is great. And, but I think the biggest thing for me in any takeaway on this is, is there a way to increase parking somehow, some way? But I think... But I think what you've done with concept one, you know, I realized after my original plans of wanting to renovate, the old one wasn't gonna work, I had to move on, and I like the fact that we're bringing something to the community that I think will attract people that are interested in different things, with the beach, the resort pool, the event space, boating. So I think, I think that's a huge plus for, for what, for what we have here. And then one of the piers, was, was it gonna include finger docks, or was it gonna include something? No, because I think originally when we had talked, and there was some discussion about, would people be able to pull their boats up to the, any, either one of the two piers? But that's not factored into either one of these designs.
Correct, it's not.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Cosd.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into my comments, I have a couple questions about the community center. Mr. City Manager, do you know off the top of your head the square footage of the current ballroom? Or does anybody in the room?
Was it a hundred by a hundred, right?
So the current ballroom, the main ballroom area is 10,750-ish.
Yeah, it's like a hundred by a hundred.
The annex, the wing where the restrooms are, is about 2,600.
Okay.
And the rotino center separately is about 7,600 square feet.
And then what was the square foot of each of these proposed?
Each of the proposed buildings are roughly 35,000 to 40,000 under roof.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five thousand square feet to forty thousand.
And forty? Okay.
So it's about, about double.
Okay. So that brings me into my first question or comment. I, I agree with a couple people who have said the resort pool is great, but I think we need, I don't know what to call it, maybe an Olympic-style pool, or, you know, the kind that people can train in and swim in, not just enjoy casually. And so my idea was, what if that went where building five is, that restaurant, and that restaurant was put inside the community center, or inside that big building? Because of the amount of space we're introducing, there certainly would be space for it. Then we could include both types of pools. So that's my first suggestion. I'm in, in favor of concept one, but with some of the things from concept two. The, yeah, like the flex lawn on concept two just seems like it could be space that's better used, so I like how we use the space in, there we go, I'm sorry, I'm getting them mixed up.
Okay.
Let's see, what else? I don't like that we take away some beach for concept one. If you compare the two, that concept two has a bigger beach. I know that when you have more amenities, you use more space, and it's not really something we can control, but I would like to see more beach. I also like that we incorporate the fountain in concept one. That's really important to me, to keep a fountain. It's not gonna be the same one, but it still has the same spirit of the old yacht club. I, I would like to see the longer pier on concept one for item 17. And I actually like the configuration of the road better on concept two, where it curves out. And just concept two in general has more open space, but again, if you want more amenities, you have to take up space. And that looks like that's it. Thank you.
Okay, for me, you know, when you look at this, I guess I got some variables, just like everyone else does, between the two plans. To start with, I like concept number one with the resort-style pool, but with some changes to that particular plan. If you look at the roadway coming in, the entryway, between the two plans, and I'll tell you why I like on concept number two, that particular design better. Not necessarily, you know, how you come in doesn't really matter to me, but what I'm looking at is, you know, that parking garage is gonna be a large structure. So my concern is to try to buffer that as much as possible for the residents that live there. And with this particular segment where the road wraps around the retention pond, that gives us the opportunity to plant some larger trees, some larger buffering between the community, the houses, and the parking garage. And that's why I like this concept of the roadway, not necessarily, doesn't have anything to do with the roadway, has to do with the buffering of the parking garage. So that's why I like that particular segment better, because I think we'll be able to buffer that three-story facility a little better. As far as I personally, on the first concept, I do like the resort-style pool. I think that'll be, you know, it's gonna be a big draw down there. But my concerns are, just like Councilmember Hayden said, you know, we could build the best thing down there and spend the most amount of money we want, but what do people do there now? I know I've done it myself many times over the many years that I've lived here. I'll go down to the yacht club during season, I'll go through the parking lot three times. If I can't find a parking spot, I go somewhere else. And so that's what we want to make sure that we don't do. I'd hate to get this all done, and it's a beautiful facility. I guarantee you, residents, as probably every visitor that comes to Cape Coral, will go here. This will be a crown jewel of the city, where everyone who comes to our city to either live or visit will, will go to this facility. So I think parking is extremely important. Now, I would rather spend additional money for additional parking than the tennis or racquetball courts. And I, I say that for two reasons. Number one, I think parking is more important than tennis at this particular location. I don't think it's in the best spending or money wisely. If we wanna cover this parking garage and put four tennis courts and a couple pickleball courts up there, the cost of those four courts and a couple, is gonna be astronomical. Four times probably, if not more, then we could put them somewhere else in the city in close proximity. So, you know, if you look at how much that's gonna cost us, the return on investment's gonna be very minimal for the monies that it's gonna cost for that, for that, even if it's a pedestrian structure only at the top. I'd rather spend that money either in parking or build some additional tennis courts somewhere else. Now, I know we've already had a discussion, Veterans Park, which is, you know, with a mile of this facility, adding two additional tennis courts. I would support that. I'd support putting four if they'd fit, before we put any tennis courts here. I think the parking is more of a concern for me than, than the tennis courts at this particular location, especially if we, you know, we can put some tennis courts at Four Freedoms Park, you got veterans, there's other areas in very close proximity to this location that we can fulfill the same need at a lesser cost than trying to put a, put a structure on top of a parking garage. I do like the idea of having the restroom centrally located, like in concept one versus two. I think that's extremely important. The, of course, the wraparound garage that is shown in both, both drawings, I think that's, that's a necessity. What I would like to know is, you know, we, we know that with these particular buildings, there is a square footage. You know, how many parking spaces is the, is the boathouse using now? If we have a two-story facility for our ballroom that we've talked about, how many people will fit in that building? You can almost back your way into, how many parking spots you got, or need? Same thing with the additional restaurant, what's that gonna be? You know, so I think what you need to do is really look at all the amenities, look at the size, square footage. We already know what's allowed as far as the Florida Building Code or the Fire Protection Code that we have. We already know how many people could go in there. So we can almost determine how many spaces that we're, we're gonna need there, not to include the people that are just gonna come there, park, and walk around, or the people that go to the park, the pool, the resort-style pool, if that's the direction, how many people can fit in there? So you start maximizing all these facilities, you can almost determine yourself how many parking spaces are you gonna need. As far as the piers, I do like the longer pier as well, number 17, the longer pier concept. I know we did talk about putting some finger piers, fingers off of these piers for boaters' access. I know we had that discussion. I think what you have to be careful about is mixing boat traffic with beach people swimming. So what I would like to see is when these two particular piers, on the east and west side, that you put finger piers in, because that boat traffic will be entering and exiting away from the beach area. So you could put some finger piers to either side, leaving the, the beach area open, so the boat traffic isn't going into that area, and we don't have to have, worry about any, any types of concern. I do have the same concern that I believe one of my other council members mentioned, that the launch is there is basically four lanes. Where are they gonna put the boat while they're parking their vehicle? I know you have that big, long area that's open. If I recall correctly, in the previous conversations, that was for a larger boat to be able to come in and mourn there. I think if I recall correctly, the small fingers in the lower right section of that picture, that was for law enforcement, if I recall correctly. But we may need to add some additional finger piers down there, so these individuals that are launching their boats can pull over there, tie their boat up, get their vehicle, and go park it. Most of the time, there's a couple people that are launching a boat, but in case there's just one individual, they can only do one thing at a time. So that is a concern that I have as well. Another question that I had, and I, Mr. City Manager, maybe you can refresh my memory, did the Coast Guard Auxiliary either, were they in the old facility? Because if I recall correctly, they wanted to make sure also that they had a, had a facility there as well. Has that been taken into consideration for this Harbor Master building as far as the Auxiliary Coast Guard?
Yeah, I have several comments from things that have been said. I, I think we're getting somewhat, some stale memory on all the stuff that is programmed in there, so I want, I'm gonna refresh you on all the stuff, because it seems like concerns are coming up from things that we've, we've previously resolved, so that, that's.
Yes, I just want to make sure, I mean, I know the Southwest organization, Councilmember Stinky mentioned, you know, that, you know, there may be some areas down here that they could possibly rent, but I want to make sure, you know, we, we got the adequate facilities when it comes to the Harbor Master, Coast Guard, public safety, those types of, I know the police department was gonna put the marine unit in there. So I want to make sure that we cover the, the public safety component first before we start having concerns with outside organizations when it comes to that Harbor Master building. So I believe, I like the fountain idea that Councilmember Cosd had mentioned. I think that's great to make sure we still incorporate that. So there are the, the variables that I would like to see kind of incorporated in, in concept number one, and if, if we're not gonna do, and I think we've already had that discussion and had a consensus, as far as any type of racquetball sports at this location, we have to make sure if we're not gonna put them there, they have to be added or in close proximity to whether it's two courts or what it is. I know we had talked about Veterans Park not too far up the street that I know that could accommodate at least two, two tennis courts. So that's where I'm at. Before I open it back up for a second round for council members, I see the city manager has his light on. I'll let him speak, and then I'll open it back up for follow-up discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All very good comments. I just want to kind of refresh, refresh you all on, on some of the pieces, so, you know, sometimes staff, we, we tend to accept what has already been discussed and, and, and designed as done, and so we're really working from January to now, but it's obvious, we, it'd be good maybe in the future to, to kind of just go through some stuff. So from the parking perspective, one of the things that we're really trying to do here is capture alternative modes of transportation. So if you recall, we took the entire seawall that's on number 18 on the bottom, which right now is parallel parking, which only fits like 13 boats. We now have expanded that to basically accommodate like three times as many boats. And we're transferring slips into the yacht club site from another park, because we don't want everybody to come by car. We want people to come by boat. We want a whole different experience at the yacht club. Come by boat, enjoy the location, enjoy the views, enjoy the restaurants, enjoy the beach, go home by boat. So I don't want you to lose sight of, we don't want to just overaccommodate vehicles, right? We want, we want people to come by ride-sharing, we want people to come by carpooling, boat traffic, so that's the first part. The second is, next to the boat ramp, we do have programmed in, I think it's six or eight, maybe like four piers or three individual finger piers, that are going to be the launch and recover tie-offs. So there are dedicated slips right adjacent to the pier, so that you can launch your boat. If you haven't preloaded it with your coolers, you can, you know, your family can get the cooler, walk it right to the boat, put stuff on. When you're recovering your boat, you tie up there, you wait for your spot, or you can start offloading. So we absolutely have a launch and recover facility planned right next to the boat ramp. The, the big empty spot that is at, at the bottom of that, remember, what we're also doing is, we intend on changing the nature of the yacht basin itself as part of this. We've programmed in for much larger vessels. So we have 60-foot, 50-foot slips, 40-foot slips, we have very few, maybe one row of like 24 and below slips. That is, that, that big open spot on the south of the boat ramp, I'm sorry, east of the boat ramp, is the actual pump-out facility for the vessels that need pump-outs. That's the location of the sewer connection and, and the water. So we need a spot there for vessels to actually come, whether they're using the facility or to just use pump-out facility to pump out. The Harbor Master building is, I know it's labeled as a Harbor Master building, it's actually going to serve like four purposes. And so inside that building, it's actually a multipurpose facility. So right now, our marine patrol, our marine unit in the Cape, Cape Coral Police Department comes to the, the main headquarters every day and then drives down there. One of the big goals and money that is available from WCIND is actually to station the entire marine unit there, to keep the boat traffic and everything down. This way, they're not jumping in their vehicles here, driving down there, parking along that. So there's an entire marine PD section in one quarter of that building. It's gonna have workstations, it has a meeting room, restrooms, communications networks. Another quarter of that building is the actual upland facilities for the marina. So if you're bringing in 60-foot vessels, 50-foot vessels, from people that are coming, you know, down the eastern seaboard across the intercoastal to us, and then either down to the Keys or up, up the, the western, they're gonna, they want washing facilities, they want clothes washing, you know, laundry facilities. So there is one quarter of that building is for the upland facilities to support a higher level standard of marina. Another quarter of that building is actually a ship store to sell goods and sundries to all the people that are in the marina, as well as capture any revenue from anybody launching down there who forgot ice or wants to grab beer or need sunscreen or down there who forgot ice or wants to grab beer or needs sunscreen or shirts. And then the last component is the actual Harbor Master Building, who's going to run the marina. So that building is way more than just the Harbor Master Building. I just wanted to refresh you with that as well. And then lastly, from January, the fountain was a key component that you all said you absolutely wanted in the new one, so that the fountain was in, is in there by design. It's also something that our citizen community, our citizen group said was something to keep moving forward into the future. And then the last thing, just to refresh, I know there's been discussion about the tennis and pickleball courts, but, so as mentioned, brought up, and we are advancing, there was a discussion in January of relocating certain activities off of this site to keep it more of a resort amenity as opposed to providing some of the neighborhood park elements that were there in the sixties, seventies, and have kind of grown through today. So the reason you don't see them was it was, we want to, we want to keep that purpose in the southeast Cape and in close proximity, but not necessarily on this site. So I just wanted to kind of bring you through kind of the history. That's how we've gotten to where we're at.
Councilmember Long, you haven't spoke yet, so I'm going to go to you first, and then I'll go to Councilmember Steinkie for a follow-up.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Both of these are great. I think they captured pretty significantly everything that we discussed about in the January retreat, and I appreciate the city manager for kind of bringing us back to that as far as some of the discussions that were had. Overall, Concept One is great. I do think, and I know it's impossible to provide it to us, but one of the things that we haven't discussed is the cost difference between both of these. I think in your words, the lush or lavish as far as one over the other, I think it's easily several million-dollar difference between one and two. That's based on absolutely zero knowledge at all, but just looking at the amenities that are available, the resort-style pool, and the larger structures in general. That would be helpful, but of course, we don't have that. I think parking, parking is parking. We're going to be a victim of our own success, no matter how much parking that we have here. I also think it's important to realize that parking in a way limits or sets an occupancy load, although this is majorly outdoors. I mean, we could have five thousand spaces if we want, and if we fill them, we don't have the capacity to be able to service five thousand people at the beach. So in a way, that limits the availability so that we're not overloaded on the beach front and some of these other amenities that are available. And again, that's five hundred vehicles, so that's not people. I mean, you've got to imagine even at two per, you're already at twelve hundred plus if you include the boats and that. So I don't know that we don't have enough parking. I think, sure, there's going to be a higher demand than what we have available on certain days, but again, trying to load that and maximize that, the other side of that coin is that there are more people to service at that facility, which I think could be problematic. The tennis court thing, we already discussed that, I think, as far as pulling it out. There's some discussion here. I think bottlenecking is such a massive project with obvious space constraints with tennis courts so that someone can bike versus drive five minutes, I think is a non-starter for me, especially considering that we've had that discussion. I do like the retention pond in two, if you could copy paste that over to one, for the sightlines coming in, that you're not being blocked by the structure itself. One other thing as far as that, the parking and the driving, Concept One is the drop-off delivery. I think you hinted at it a little bit, but I think no matter which design we go with, we've got to certainly be mindful of the needs of those facilities that we're proposing on these sites as far as the amount and the size of these trucks that are coming into service, even something as simple as the restaurant. Those are some pretty significant trucks that they use to come in and deliver product. And so if you're, if you've got it at the roundabout down there by the boathouse, that's going to minimize the circulation, the flow, I would imagine to some degree. And those are at least once a week, a couple of different trucks. And that's not including the other one now at five, and then, of course, whatever we put into seven. Like I said, you've mentioned it, but I think that there's a lot of emphasis that needs to be added on that, in addition to, and I know this is something that you'll work on, but coordinating with Fire and EMS to make sure that all of this makes sense for them as far as ingress and egress to those facilities. The pool, I like the resort-style pool. I do see here that it's not clearly delineated, but I'm imagining that there's going to be, we're going to block the pool off to some extent, like it exists currently. It's not going to be an open concept where you can come freely to and from the beach. And so I want to make sure that we design this with that in mind, that there is going to be some inhibitors from walking to the beach, so there's a significant portion there that it will be blocked. I did like the idea from Councilman Shepherd as far as providing sort of quick bikes, I guess, in his words. I don't know that I would sacrifice a full-service restaurant for it and the potential revenue that that would bring. I do think there's a possibility and opportunity, if we stick with this concept, to maybe put it at the, what, the southwestern corner of the building number seven. If you could tie it into sort of that walkway that goes from the playground, and then it would have the beach access as well, and possibly have that service to pool. That's a cool concept, I think, that would serve both of those amenities in a way that incorporates what I think is a good idea from him as far as having that available. And then the other stuff that was brought up, the restroom, I think, sure, that's a great idea to have it more centrally located as it is in the second concept. The longer western pier, I agree with as well. And then, yeah, I think you guys got enough direction that you need, but, you know, figuring out where to sort of dock the boats while they're launching the boats in the boat ramp is something that's, that's important. That can become a problem really quickly if we don't have that addressed some way or another. So, thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak in favor of actually going at this from a data approach on the parking, and the buildings will have capacities, the swimming pool have capacities. So let's determine what those capacities will be, and then make sure that our parking is adequate, you know, for that. I'm hoping that we're, you know, considering the same for the boat and trailer parking based on the comings and goings of the people that are launching their boats. I would absolutely be in favor of tennis elsewhere with the thought that it's still, if you will, somehow neighborhood-accessible. You know, the folks that ride their bicycles and walk into what were the tennis courts, you know, for them to get on their bikes and, you know, ride a couple miles and cross Cape Coral Parkway, and I wouldn't be so much, I wouldn't see that as a good trade-off, but if there's something that can be done where they can stay on the south side of Cape Coral Parkway and access their tennis facilities, I can certainly support that. And just one thought, and I don't know if it's out-of-the-box thinking or not, but I'm reminded of a, you know, Sunday School song, "Hide it under a bush, he'll know, I'm going to let it shine." Based on Concept Number One, I would think that many people coming to observe and participate and enjoy the amenities of the park, they would never even make it to where the fountain is, the way it's placed in the diagram there. If we were to go, you know, to Concept Two's roadway end, you know, to have that fountain somewhere near the entry to the park, so that it's, so it's a focal point as the people that come in from the standpoint of, you know, in memorial of the initial, you know, yacht club that was there, to have that as a focal point as people enter the park would be pretty cool, I think. And so, you know, if you were to look at Concept Number Two, when that road veers off to the right to go around the water retention pond, you get that spot right there in the middle of the Y, if you will, where the walking path there is, you know, on the bottom side of that water reservoir, to have that fountain as a focal point entering the park, I think would be pretty cool, rather than just putting it there at the entry to, you know, to the community center for any event that's happening inside the community center. I would, I would think that the majority of the people that use that park day in and day out will not even be where that, where that fountain is placed there. So just a thought. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, a few things. I liked the idea you just came up with, the fountain. I think that's a tremendous idea to have it at the entrance, maybe a little small fountain that's like a waltzing water, part of our history of the waltzing waters, with the lighting and everything else. I think that would be awesome at the entrance, and give more room for operational movement down by the community building. I also just wanted to mention to all of us, that I think we all recognize that the community in general, the city as a whole, we have to share our parks. We can't have every amenity that we're used to having in our neighborhood park be in our neighborhood park anymore. We have to, we have to use our water locations for water amenities. And so I'm not in favor of trying to put tennis or racquetball or anything like that in this park. I can tell you that some of the new parks in my area that are in the Southwest have added tennis courts and racket, and I bumped into a lot of people there, and they're from all over the city. And I believe that we need to put the right, the right features at the right parks where them features work the best. I also agree with something that the mayor pointed out, is we want to make sure that our design helps control the traffic. So for instance, we talked about restaurants, a certain amount of tables. If they have, if they have four hundred tables, then there's going to be four hundred cars, you know, and things like that. So that's why I'm for the second eatery, being more of a walk-up eatery to service the people using the pool and the beach. I liked how the other council members pointed out the bathroom. I even want to go a little farther with that. I know it's hard designing and fitting in that bathroom somewhere. I'm for having two, one at each end, maybe a smaller one at each end, because I do know that even before the hurricane, it was a strain on the existing restaurant. They would have lines of people from the beach using the bathroom in there, even though we had a beach bathroom. So I think with the volume of people that are going to be here, just like we're concerned about the parking, I think we need to be concerned about restrooms as well. So I would be for two, one at each end.
There will be restroom facilities in the ballroom.
Okay.
So some of what I think is we get trapped in what's kind of existing there, that the ballroom's reserved and you can't go in and use it, but so the new design will have like a beach restroom and a multipurpose facility.
Great. Thanks for bringing that to my attention. And the last thing that I know just from being a boater that brings my boat to the ramps, I have a, my vehicle's about twenty-four feet long. My boat with the trailer is about thirty-five feet long. What I am concerned about is coming down the road to launch my boat and having enough swing room to pull forward and actually get the whole vehicle and trailer straight to back up. I don't know if that's something that your engineers need to look at. I can't judge that by a picture. I don't know the measurements, you know? But if more swing room is available, maybe if Building Thirteen was thinner, and it made the road kind of, you know, create a swing there, I don't even know if it's needed. I might be bringing something up not necessary.
If you may recall, early on in the process, you asked us about that, and we provided you to show you that we extended all of the lengths of those parking spaces, the turn radiuses in, and left that open space for larger, like forty, fifty-foot vessels to be able to launch and recover.
Okay.
The newer open fish style.
Great. But I think we've came a long way, and I'm really happy with everything that was presented. I think this is, this is going to be a massive draw, and I think we're, we can expect it to be packed all the time. So, yeah, my biggest concerns are parking, bathrooms, and having the right amenities at the park, and that's my big three. But everything else looks great, thank you.
Yeah, for me, my only follow-up would be, I like Councilmember Steinkie's idea with putting the fountain out to the entryway, because everybody, a hundred percent of the people going here, will see it then. You probably wouldn't get that type of a exposure where it's at in the other drawing. I also like what Councilmember Long said. I think we can get the best of both worlds. I think Building Number Five could probably stay the way it is, but do some type of a small concession stand type built into the Building Number Seven, you know, where you can walk from the pool or the beach, just something, you know, you're getting softer and you're getting a hot dog, a hamburger, just something very minor that you walk up to, you get it, and you walk away, no seating. So very similar to a concession-style type approach. Chicken fingers or, you know, whatever the kids, a snowball, that sort of thing. So I kind of like that idea. That way, you kind of get the best of both worlds. You know, you still have an additional sit-down area for Building Five, but, you know, the people can still walk up, just get something very similar, pay for it, and walk away. So I kind of like that idea that Councilmember Long had brought up. Other than that, I've pretty much, the only question I have, since I'm the one that brought up the additional fingers in the two piers, how many spots do we have available now at that particular, because we all know what the manatee, do we have any additional slips? If the answer is no, is there anywhere that we can transfer? Because I know we just transferred to the Bemni some spots. Are there any additional slips throughout the city that we could transfer there if we did want to add some additional fingers off either one of these piers?
Right now, we have a deficit here, and we're transferring some of the surplus that we have at D and D. So now that we had that site plan, we knew what the balance was, even reserving some for the restaurant there. So we're transferring slips from there to here. If we want to add any more in the future, we would have to transfer as well, and I believe we still have some available at Tropicana Park and Serenya Vista Park. So that northwest spreader waterway is a very high-ranking waterway, and you can't even inner-waterway transfer. So it's not like we can add more to the Seven Islands or Tropicana, you can only transfer out of those. The only thing is, if we ever wanted to expand any uses at either one of those parks, if we don't leave some, then we'll be out. But certainly, we, the consideration has been to put the fisherman on, you know, the kind of the new pier so that they can park in the garage and go right to the pier and never have to access the interior of the entire park. It kind of starts to keep that separation of users, the same thing with the boaters, they stay away, and so you start creating these separate user groups. And then that would enable the existing pier for us to put kind of a second tier, like we talked about in the previous meeting, putting like, having an elevated walkway, but then a kind of a lower one that you can then pull up to on your boat and then walk up to the pier to get. So that would, that would free up that whole pier.
Yes, I would like to, you know, take a look at that and see if we have some additional slips throughout the city, transfer them, and this is going to be a great amenity for the city. You're going to have people not only come here by car, but I guarantee you, you'll have boaters from Fort Myers, Fort Myers Beach, Iona, all over are going to come to this facility. So I want to make sure that we maximize the boater access as much as we can. And lastly, I know that we are doing a survey of the existing pier structure. When can we expect that particular report? And the reason that I mentioned that, if the existing structure is safe and we can utilize, that will save us the immense amount of time for any type of Army Corps permitting, because all we have to do is basically redeck and over the existing. So I'm kind of eager to hear about that report.
Yeah, so we should have the report by the end of next week or early, mid to end of next week, from a preliminary review. It seemed like most of the piles did not suffer a lot of catastrophic damage from the storm, so that's positive. Keep in mind that as you're talking about potentially adding boat parking or piers or parking adjacent to that, that would probably require us to modify the structure a bit, which would be a different permitting process.
Yeah. What I would like to see us do, if we have the availability and the structure there is adequate, is get that pier up and running. I know that we're going to have to apply for Army Corps permits on the fingers. We already know how long that process is. I don't want to have to wait two or three years to get the Army Corps permit for these fingers. Let's get the main structure, if it's structurally sound, let's get that rebuilt, get that open. Let's get the main structure, if, if it's structurally sound, let's get that rebuilt, get that open. Over the next two years or whatever, we can apply for our Army Corps and that the EP permits for any type of fingering, uh, piers. So that's what I would like to see, hopefully us move forward in.
We can look at a phased, kind of a phased approach for that. Um, we did get the DEP exemption, um, for, to replace the decking, et cetera. The next step in that is to submit for the Corps permit, because we still do have to get a Corps permit even to rebuild it. That's probably a six-month process, but that's a lot shorter than the eighteen-plus month process to do an entirely new pier.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll look at that for you.
And Mr. City Manager, I know I won it, so I'm just, uh, if you could, uh, once you get that report, give that to all of council, please. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one more thing. Building thirteen, like I talked about earlier, I don't know the necessary square footage for, for what's going there. Seems like a very large building. Do you know what the square footage is, as, as, is right now?
I'm sorry, I don't recall offhand what that square footage was. I will say that we're representing what we had shown in the approved master plan and that we had actually designed for. And as a result of that, as Mr. Ilchilson kind of touched on as well, that was the result of a lot of stakeholder meetings with emergency services, police, the harbor master, to make sure we're accommodating all of those facilities.
Uh, if there's room, uh, I think it would be a good idea to add a small, uh, area in that building for refreshments and, and snacks and ice and soda and things like that.
We have that, yeah.
It's already there?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. Uh, just had a quick question. It, um, Mr. City Manager, if we, instead of, instead of doing, uh, finger piers off of that, uh, off of the e- existing, uh, structure that we have now, um, if we were to float a parallel, does that require the same transfers or not? And if so, is it based on a certain number of lengths of boats, so to speak, that would lay up on that floating dock?
Yes, it, it is, um, you still have to, a, a wet slip is the same as a dry slip is the same as a parking space in a boat ramp parking spot. So if you bring one, uh, one finger pier or one floating dock, um, it is, still needs to be accommodated under the manatee protection plan. Uh, what is open is the length of vessel. So for example, a sixty-foot vessel berth, uh, that we've added in the center pier is the same as a twenty-four-foot berth on the left. Regardless of, you know, it, it could end up accommodating three twenties if we don't have a sixty in there. But it, it's defined by the engineer of record submitting the plans.
So, it, so if we were to put a, a, a floating dock in that was a hundred and fifty feet long?
Right.
What, what, how, how do they make the divisions to say, okay, it counts for X number?
We, the engineer of rec, we do. The designer does.
So if it's a hundred and twenty feet and we say it's meant for two sixty-foot vessels, it could still accommodate more vessels than that in the meantime, until that sixty-foot vessel shows up.
There's reasonable things they look at. I mean, they'll look at the depth to see if you have eight-foot of depth to even accommodate a draft of six or more feet. So if you tried to output that in a, you know, a two-foot canal or something, they, they would say, yeah, okay. And so the, it, it's, there's some reasonableness to it. Uh, and maneuverability, you know, is the fairway that you're coming into, one point five times the, the beam width of a, you know? So there's things that they look at just to make sure that people aren't
I get it.
Fudging the numbers, but, but it is defined by the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Law?
Yep, one last final point from me. Um, I don't know whether we got, uh, consensus one way or the other on, I know that's not what we're doing here, uh, what to do with that, uh, retention pond as far as the entryway. But for me, there was some discussion, at least from a couple of different people, about relocating the fountain towards the front so everyone can see it. But, uh, I would, I want to be careful that for me, because it takes away of some of the beauty and the legitimacy of that banquet, the entrance to that banquet hall, if that's one of the reasons that we're gonna be utilizing that space. Um, is it, is to have that space in the front to kind of beautify that, that facility. Um, so if we did have that retention around the front where you're driving around and putting some sort of fountain in that water in that entrance, but water feature, not necessarily a, a fountain, so to speak. Um, so that way you could have the best of both worlds. Because to me, taking that away from the front of seven, uh, the larger building in, in concept one, um, creates sort of a hardened space out front. It's a hard sort of front on the face of that building. Just a thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Keith. Um, but if, if we keep with, with the pond, can't you do like the Waltz water dancing where they could enter? Perfect. So we would have, you know, both of the best worlds. So I'm in agreement with Councilman Keith and, uh, that would be awesome if you could add that in the pond for the entrance. Thanks.
Um, do any other thing for me, Mr. City Manager, that I would like to see, and I'm sure it would help the, uh, rest of council? As if, I know we're moving forward through this process. Um, I would like to see a timeline of the next several months of where, how are we gonna get from point A to point B? And C and how, how, what's, what's the, the goal for the get across the finish line? As far as, not necessarily the construction, but to get it where it's out to bid. You know, I know that we have a lot of questions still to answer. Um, so I, I want to make sure that we are, uh, I don't want to push it where we miss something, but I want to make sure that we are diligently making progress month after month, uh, on this project. Uh, I don't want to be talking about this two years from now, so. Uh, I'd like to see some type of, uh, expectation that you feel that we have getting through the process. So I think that would help all of us and answer some questions from the community when we get those answers as well. Councilmember Cummings, I see your light one again.
Yeah, um, thank you. With that being said, can we kind of go over everything we just talked about so you guys are on the right direction? Okay, perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we're, we're actually gonna have a, a timeline, because as you know, we have, um, some demolition plans that are being put together that are gonna go out. Um, we're gonna look into piggyback, so we're gonna, we're opening the beach. Uh, we're gonna do the, the media announcement tomorrow. We're gonna be, start bringing in some people. But shortly thereafter in December, we're, we're gonna be bringing in some heavy equipment to, to start preparing for the future, uh, of the park. Uh, we're, as I said, we're coming back in January now that we know kind of the building, um, which building structure we're looking at. Uh, we'll start bringing you the fit and finish. And then from there, we'll, we'll put together some plans for the design of this, uh, for construction. We have not stopped any of the original permitting for the replacement of the seawalls, the marina replacement, the harbor master building. Uh, so we, we've still been advancing that in, uh, with the Army Corps, uh, on that. We're hopeful that we can get that permit issued so we can award that contract and get the seawalls going while we're finishing the design on the, on the interior and then just do any permit mods for stormwater, uh, to bring that in. So we, we, we think this is all, uh, laying out well, but we'll, we'll bring a timeline. Uh, just a general recap, and, uh, James, if I miss anything, you jump in after me.
Okay.
So it's, it appears like, um, everyone likes concept one. I know that, um, Councilmember Stanky said hybrid, but I think a lot of the hybrid stuff he brought in, everybody has. So we're gonna use as a basis of design, concept one. There are two, four, five, uh, council members who specifically said, concept one, however, with the curved drive. So we'll make a modification to shift that with a curved drive. Uh, two, four, five have said, um, the, uh, the longer pier for the new, uh, the new pier. Two, four, six. Seven have spoken favor of the resort-style pool, so keeping with, uh, uh, concept one, using the resort-style pool. Three people spoke in favor of kind of shifting the restroom that's to the south a little more, uh, centrally located. Um, so we're, we can look at, uh, kind of repositioning that. Three people spoke in kind of re-looking at the parking capacities. Uh, we'll do a parking capacity analysis and include the uses, but then again, all of the other types of parking that we're, we're including, which are the boat. Um, there was, uh, some discussion about relocating the fountain, uh, kind of for more, more centrally located where everybody can do that. I think if we shift that curved drive and we do kind of a, a, a water feature, then it could serve as a, you know, an Instagram wall or a Facebook wall place for pictures so that everybody coming and going from the structure can have a nice place for a photo. Several comments on the poolside concessions, uh, or poolside quick bites. Uh, and so we'll look to see when we're programming the building for number seven to see if we can, uh, accommodate that. I think that won't be a problem because we haven't finalized the programming in the building. And then there were two comments on the tennis and pickleball, uh, on the roof. Uh, but I think, uh, one, two, three, we're still on kind of a, not here. And then a- actually, Councilmember Stanky said, as long as we can try to find some neighborhood proximity, um, you could live with that. So I think we have, that's kind of the summary. Curved drive, longer fishing pool, resort-style pool, basis of concept one. Relocate the bathrooms more central and move the fountain, uh, either relocate the fountain to a, a, of something closer or, or just add another one or add a water feature if we think that that one is still really good for the building pictures itself for the weddings.
Yeah, just a couple small things. Um, there was a little discussion about the pool and combining that or having a separate lap pool for exercise. Um, actually, if you recall, in January, I showed you a pool that was very resort-style, but had a separate attached lap area. I would probably recommend something like that versus a separate pool, because that would allow us to keep the same body of water, reduce pumps, et cetera. So just for consideration. And then on a related note, if we do talk about a children's pool or aquatic area, I would recommend that that is separate from the main adult pool. There's, um, health department reasons if you need to close that down, that allows you to still maintain operations in the resort pool. The other thing on the stormwater pond, as we look at kind of shuffling that and rerouting the road, I think we'll also study what are the options there if we were to do a, similar to what you have today, which is kind of a combined dry, uh, stormwater facility that you park on in an overflow basis. Um, so we'll study that as well and see what that could yield. Okay?
Um, Mr. City Manager, I believe you had mentioned there was only two individuals that talked about some type of a lap pool. And it sounded like the majority of the council wanted to stay with the resort-style pool. Uh, and then I think I had also heard someone had mentioned, uh, they weren't, uh, particularly agreed on two separate pools. I can't remember who said that.
I had six comments specifically for a resort-style pool and two on, on the, the lap pool.
Yeah, and the reason that I mentioned that is because if you've already gotten direction and then he brought this up, then we're going backwards.
Maybe I misunderstood that.
Then we're gonna have another discussion. So either we're gonna go with the majority or we're gonna open it back up for a discussion.
What are you doing to me, James? Sorry.
Uh, Councilmembers, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I certainly spoke in favor of the resort-style pool, but, but pool designers, uh, do some amazing things. And so to, to have your resort-style pool with, uh, an integrated lap area is certainly accomplishable. So, um, it doesn't have to be one hundred percent free-form. Um, there can be a, a lateral edge, uh, that would allow, that would allow for some lap swimming. So I'd, I'd absolutely speak in favor of the resort-style pool, but I believe in incorporating into that an area where, where some laps swimming would, would be available. That's all.
And that is achievable as long as the majority of us agree to that. So I, I mean, if that's something that we need to talk more.
Let's, let's, let's get it talked out now so that we have direction on what, I mean, we're gonna be designing it.
Yeah, because if you're getting the consensus by a majority and then we start adding things that he mentioned, um, then we're, we're going backwards. We're not going forwards here. So whatever we do, let's vet it, get it out in the open. Like we've done everything else, we've, uh, you know, it's a majority. Um, so I'll open it back up for that discussion. Uh, Councilmember Shepherd?
I think when we talk about, uh, laps, we're talking about, uh, sports swimming and I, and I think we're aggressively working on trying to create that in another location in the city. Is, uh, that style pool for competition or working out and things like that. So I, I think that's something that we're gonna have at another location. That, and that goes back to what I said of having the right features at the right park. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, and I agree with that. This is a resort-style pool and that's exactly what it is, a resort-style pool. Um, that's to me a, a, a different, um, usage. And, uh, like Councilmember Shepherd, I know that's something that, that's on our horizon also, some type of, uh, an additional location where you have, uh, sporting events, you have a lap pool. Uh, so I think that's at a different location, so I agree with Councilmember Shepherd. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I've been at resorts where you've had a lap pool with the, um, the, the resort-style. So I don't think we're looking at Olympic-style type of pool. I just think for the people to do laps back and forth, that's what they like to wake up in the mornings to do, especially in that area. I don't see why we couldn't add that into that. Um, I've seen them, been around them. I don't think there's a problem with adding it. I'm not saying Olympic-style, that's completely different than just a lap-style. So, thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, for me, I guess I wasn't clear. The, the resort-style pool, as is designed in the concept, is what I would propose moving forward with. I, I don't know that we should get, try to get involved in recreating, um, something that, that we originally didn't incorporate. So yeah, for me, it's just the resort pool is without it, without the, uh, the build-in for the laps, um, with the understanding that we're, we've been working, have been and, and will continue to work on bringing something, um, in, in a more official capacity for those types of activities in the future.
Councilmember Cum, uh, Cogston, you got an opinion?
Same as what I said before. Um, I think it would be actually, I like the idea of adding something on, like Councilmember Cummings was talking about, just connecting it to the existing resort-style pool.
It looks like we're three to three there, so I guess we'll have to wait till we have our other two council members there.
I mean, we, we, we're gonna come back in January. So one, if, if, if we're that undecided and it's not, you know, if, if we can figure out a way to accommodate not having a separate, you know, lanes and, and build it into this, we can also fix in programming, we can say, hey, if you're coming to swim laps, it's Monday, Wednesday and Friday from seven to eight or seven to nine, and then it's resort-style. So if, let us, let us tweak and, let us tweak on this. Let's see if we can, uh, accommodate that. And then we can also address, uh, making sure that the population that wants to do that isn't conflicting with the resort amenities, you know, from ten to sunset.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, because what you'll probably have is you'll have some specific groups that may want to show up and utilize the pool. Um, I think that's a great idea, you know, from seven AM till nine AM.
Kind of keep them, again, keeping the user groups separated by programming so that when they're in there, the beachgoers and the restaurateurs aren't, but then when they leave, then the beachgoers are showing up and so you're cycling through, maximizing the parking.
Yeah. You'll have kids in the pool then trying to utilize it and then you got an adult trying to do laps. And I think that's a great idea, uh, programming would probably be a better, uh, way of approaching it. That way we're not mixing the two uses. Uh, Councilmembers, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure I wasn't misunderstood. I would, I, I'm not looking for lane separation, you know, uh, you know, tiles on the, on the bottom of the, of the pool to make sure, you know, that you're in your land. I wasn't talking about that at all. I was talking about, as you look at the resort-style pool that's, that's on the screen right now, just if, if you will, at the top end of that pool, instead of it all being all curved, you make the top of it straight with two right angles on each side that two or three people could just swim across the pool if they wanted to. So, so yeah, I wasn't necessarily looking for a competitive swimming pool. Just instead of everything free-form, have a couple right angles in there so somebody could swim, push off the wall and swim back. That's all.
Thank you.
Not to mention that great canal that's probably a quarter to half a mile long right in front of us. So, all right, well, I think, uh, we've given the direction that Mr. City Manager you need and, uh, we look forward to, uh, you know, the next step in the process. So thank you for the update. Um, the last item we have on the agenda is kayak and egotourism programs here in the, in the city and I'll turn that over to Mr. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Uh, City Manager.
This item was advanced by Councilmember Steinkie, seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Coslin.
Okay. Well, I will turn it over to Councilmember Steinkie.
I'm happy to take it. So, um, you know, and I mentioned it before, uh, in, in our meeting when I brought this up. You know, sometimes when you take an action, you catch up some, you know, some unintended consequences. And I think, uh, it, with, with our efforts to make our park systems, especially those that have, uh, you know, an aquatic component, um, you know, accessible to all, we wanted to, you know, pull, uh, business activities out of them that was prohibiting our, our rank and file citizens from being able to enjoy the park for what it was meant for. Uh, and, uh, on the east coast of our city, we have a, um, great opportunity for, uh, for ecotourism with kayaks and, and communing with, you know, aquatic, uh, wildlife and nature. And we had that on the, on the, on the west side as well. It was just, um, handled by private enterprise rather than by city enterprise. And, and what I felt was is we, I, I, I feel we still need to provide an access to that, um, aquatic, uh, you know, wildlife environment that we have, that we're blessed with. That's a calling card of our city, um, with the fact that, you know, it's, uh, ecotourism is important to our area. Uh, it's important to Lee County. I, I sit on the Lee County, uh, Tourist Development Council. Uh, and, and I, I think that we're doing a disservice to not find some way, whether it's by P3, whether it's by, uh, s- s- city, uh, operations. And, and with the brainstorming that was done, uh, with staff, um, there's other options that I never even thought of that are out there. There's actually, you know, if you will, but rentable lockers where the kayaks are stored in a, in a locker and you swipe your credit card and there's your kayak and your, and your paddle and you're, you've got access. So we have a lot of people, we don't need just a launch because the, a lot of people come to our area, aren't bringing their kayaks with them. Uh, you know, they need a kayak. And so now we either have to provide some way, uh, for them to access those kayaks, uh, and, and, and get into the water. And quite frankly, you know, many people like to have a guide a- and whatnot. So that's why I wanted to bring it up. I just thought that, that, uh, Serenio Vista got caught up in an effort, you know, to, um, make our parks as accessible as we can to all of our citizens and all of our tourists. Um, and I think we lost, uh, an opportunity for them to do that on the west side, uh, through that, through that action. So however we do it, I think that's, uh, open, but I think we gotta do it. And so, um, I, I know that, uh, our Parks and Recs Department has looked at some options. Uh, we certainly do it on the east side through our own city resources. So that's why I brought it up.
Okay. I'll open up for any discussion. Uh, I guess my position hasn't changed for me. Um, as we all know, we had, uh, jet ski businesses and other businesses that wanted to utilize our parks, uh, to run from. And to me, um, you know, there's many amenities that I'm sure that our residents would want. Me personally, I'd rather run a jet ski than I would a kayak. There's gonna be other individuals that would probably rather run a, a kayak than a jet ski. So for me, it's a, a policy decision, um, you know, just like any other business in this city. Um, I don't know how many business tax receipts that we have. Anyone can open a business. Uh, look at all the, the boat rental places. They, they are, uh, at all private facilities. And they rent a space. They conduct their business. Um, they, they rent their, whatever they're renting. And to me, uh, I would never, uh, hinder any business from opening, uh, on private property and, and providing amenity to the community. Uh, I welcome it. Um, but when it comes to our property, uh, not, not to mention the liability, um, I feel that we develop a policy. I don't care if it's a kayak business, a jet ski business, renting a boat. Um, it, it could be renting a kite so you can fly it on a windy day. It doesn't really matter. You're either gonna allow it or you're not gonna allow it. And I think that's what the council did when they made a decision that we weren't gonna allow any businesses, uh, to run from the parks. Now, with that being said, I don't want anyone to, uh, get the ideal that, you know, you take the yacht club. We were just talking about that. We're talking about, you already have the boathouse. We, we have another business down that, that area that you could have a P3. Where they come down, they build a facility, uh, in that particular area, uh, and, and run a restaurant or, or just like the boathouse is doing now. Um, so I think, uh, you know, the community parks, uh, the destination parks with those types of P3s, uh, are, uh, important. Um, so I think that, uh, you know, when you, when you open it up to one business, you have to open it up to all. So if that's the direction that this council wants to go in and develop a policy so our parks are open, uh, to, to anyone, and I don't think that you can, uh, restrict it to just water activities. It could be any activity. There may be a person that wants an open up, uh, you know, they wanna sell a particular item or a host of items. Uh, it could be a T-shirt shop. You gonna let a T-shirt shop open up that, you know, got Cape Coral T-shirts? You know, so to me, it's, it's either all or none. Uh, when you start picking and choosing, to me, you're being discriminatory against a particular business. Uh, I don't wanna get into that, into that, uh, in- into that method. I think it's either all or none. So for me, and then when you look at the, uh, uh, this particular, um, business here, um, there could be, uh, uh, you know, this is a Matt Lachey, uh, particular business. They don't even have a, a business license to do business here in the state of, or in, uh, the city of Cape Coral. So that, you know, that's another concern that I have too. Um, so I think they provide a great, a great, um, amenity to the, to the community, but it doesn't have to be at our city parks. They could have a brick and mortar business somewhere else, close proximity to Serenio, where like you said, they pull up, they get their kayak, here's your kayak. Uh, I know there's a facility on Del Prado, uh, that, that rents, uh, um, uh, slingshots. Here's your slingshot, go have a great day. They could, they could pull up to a brick and mortar, here's your kayak, uh, you know, rent it for 24 hours, 12 hours, eight hours. They could take it to Serenio and drop it off and go, and go. Uh, so that, that's my position. It hasn't changed. Uh, I just tried to equally apply the rule to everyone, no matter who they are. And that's my position. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. Um, I've always been in favor for these businesses to come in our parks. So when I go through Florida, I think I've said this before, um, I enjoy doing the ecotourism. I like to see what's out there. I wanna see the manatees. I wanna see our tortoises. I wanna see our dolphins. That's why me and my family moved to Florida. And I feel like Cape Coral, we're all, we are known for our waterways. That's why we're so unique. And that's why I feel like we built out so quickly is because of our canals. Um, I feel that we could develop some kind of policy that could help, um, to bring in, uh, what Councilman Steinkie is talking about. You know, we went over the rental lockers. I think that is a great idea. No one has to be there. Uh, you put the kayaks in, you know, you pay for it, you could take it out, put it in, it's done. Um, people that live in Matt Lachey, I get it, Mayor. They don't live in our city. But can we put a policy together? They have to get a business license, just like any other business. So if they want to do rut ski, rents, uh, do jet ski rental, they have to get a business license, like anybody else. Um, it's another revenue, revenue income for the city. Um, I think we're missing out on something very big. If we can put our minds together and come up with a good policy and a plan of action, um, that would be well organized, not just anybody and everybody, but they would have to meet a certain type of criteria if they wanna bring in any type of water sports, um, for our parks. Um, so I'm very open to this. And, and I think we're missing out on something big. I really do, if, if we keep our mind closed to this. So, thank you.
Any other individuals want to weigh in? Any lights? Councilmember Coslin.
Thank you. Um, well, I seconded this, so obviously I support the idea. Um, I think this is different from other situations that we've looked at and talked about. The jet ski situation, for example, because this is a service that we already offer as a city. We offer kayak rental. And I think a P3 makes perfect sense because it's something we could then extend to a different park without, um, doing it ourselves. And we use P3s a lot for that reason. So some, we can accomplish something without doing it on our own. Um, we want people to enjoy our waterways, especially in that part of the city. A lot of people don't have the opportunity. They don't own kayaks or they're visiting here, especially this time of year. And so this would give them that opportunity. I have a question for Mike. Did, do you know, do we ever get complaints or before when we had this discussion, um, did we ever get complaints about Serenio Vista Park? I know we had a lot in the other parks.
Any of the 311 complaints would, would have been forwarded to, uh, our Parks Director, Joe. So I'm gonna have Joe answer.
Good afternoon, uh, good afternoon. Yeah, it's afternoon already. Uh, Joe Pachala, Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, the answer is no. We were, they're generally around the water ski rentals since I've been here, uh, the jet ski rentals. Uh, that's where they were because of the boat ramps and the, how crowded they were and they had traffic going through the neighborhoods. But nothing from Serenio Vista, from, from my understanding.
Thank you. So that kinda illustrates my point. I think this is apples and oranges. And, um, to apply the policy like a blanket is just not right in this situation.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I guess I, I, I missed out on part of the conversation. The, the basis of this is to engage or the possibility of engaging into a P3 to allow this. I think when it was originally just, see, that's the city manager's saying no. So what, what are we talking about?
The last, we're, we're discussing the last, what was brought up was basically reconsidering. We are, we are moving forward with getting rid of commercial activities.
Correct.
At the park. So that's what we're moving forward to 1231. At the last meeting, Councilmember Steinkie seconded by Councilwoman Cummings asked to.
Coslin.
My apologies. Uh, recon- reconsider that direction.
Which basically means, which, which, okay, so just to kind of, so that means carve, carve this portion out and allow to continue on the basis that it's continued in the past. Which is basically, other than get a BTR and kinda what you're gonna do.
Two, two, two different things. And so, uh, without trying to guide the discussion, we're, we're listening because for us, we see it as either we're providing ecotourism.
Right.
And, and, or is this specifically about Gulf Coast kayak? So I'm trying not to, I'm trying to listen to hear what is being said, to understand, do we wanna just provide the amenity and the service to our residents? Cause we have options for that.
Well, that's what I'm trying to discern here.
Or is it an outright reversal from previous direction?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out myself, is what are we talking about? Cause I thought that it was basically the, the genesis was, hey, let's, we, we got, these guys got caught up in a larger net, so let's just take them out. Well, to me, that means then just allow them to continue as they have continued. Just no P3, no, just sort of show up at the park and distribute the kayaks. Is that correct?
If, if that's the direction, then I'm, then I'm gonna, then I'm gonna have to restate administration's original recommendation, which is we would enter into a franchise where we capture, where we negotiate a contract and have revenue sharing, not just some permit. So.
So, so it's multifaceted. That's what I'm trying to navigate through. Um, I, look, this all started, I think that the point's not lost that this started for a particular reason. The reason being that the, the personal watercraft, uh, were creating issues in our parks. Um, did these, these individuals get caught in a larger net? Sure, to some extent. I think it's a, it's a, it's a overall plus, uh, amenity to the residents, particularly in that area. That's my district. Um, being able to do that. And I think Mr. Steinkie, as, as a member of the TDC has even indicated that it's been recognized, uh, by a larger portion, um, of the county as, as an amenity as far as tourism is concerned. And I believe we received some, some funding from the TDC recently to that park, um, which to me is an acknowledgement of that. Now, whether we go in a direction of allowing, um, a third party to come in and, and continue operations to some extent under whatever agreement that you wanna, um, headline, to me, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out now is whether we do that or whether that's a service that the city sort of engages in pursuing. Bottom line for me is I think it's an amenity. I think it needs to be there. So I, I, if that's the question, should it be there? Yes. Uh, to me, I think what I'd like to figure out here is whether we wanna do it or whether we wanna allow someone else to do it. And then maybe that is the discussion, but I'm, uh, if it is, then I'm, I'm, uh, well behind on that one. Thank you.
Yeah, I think for, for me, if we're trying to establish an amenity there that we early, already have a program for, that we run and we operate at, uh, Four Mile Cove, then we could expand our program over here. We still have the amenity then. But that's not allowing a private business to come in and run in our parks. So we could get the best of both worlds. We could provide the amenity to the community if we feel that that's the amenity that we want. And do the same thing at Serenio Vista that we do at, um, Four, Four Mile Cove. So we could do the same thing, have the same result. Uh, and then we don't compromise bringing private businesses and to the parks. So we could achieve our goal, uh, but also keep with the policy. Now, the policy, was that just direction that council gave or was that an ordinance or a resolution that we had voted on?
Well, what we do now is we come forward and get direction from council consensus, and then we follow up with a resolution.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we actually have a resolution now that has affirmative direction voted on by council to, uh, terminate these agreements December 31st.
So then, so that being said, then it would have to come back as another formalized resolution and passed by a majority. The other thing, uh, that I would make mention, you know, we, we only have, we have two councilmembers that aren't present. Maybe this is something, uh, that we could even, uh, add to next week's meeting, um, so the eight of us can weigh in. As we all know, we make decisions by a majority. Uh, I know I'm on maybe the other end that, that what Councilmember Steinkie might be thinking. We make all of our decisions by majority. Maybe this is something we add on Wednesday's discussion to continue it so we can have the input of the other two individuals. So I'd be willing to do that as well, uh, if the rest of the council feels that's important.
You mean in two weeks, you mean at, at another Cowie, you mean?
No, next week's Wednesday meeting.
Regular meeting?
As, as an agenda. I don't think it'll be a long topic of discussion. Uh, and then, then you'll get your consensus by a majority and then you've already got your second. You can go back, work on your resolution, come back and get the majority vote.
Well, are we sharing the floor?
Go ahead.
I, I was not advocating for any one company, just I wanted to make that really clear. What I was advocating for was the activity and the amenity that would be available in our city because of unique opportunities for our residents and visitors. And, and for, you know, if you go to, if you go to Denver, you go to Salt Lake City, um, at the car rental counter, they ask you, do you want ski racks? Well, at RSW, they're not saying, do you need a kayak rack? So just to have kayaks available for rent doesn't really help our, our tourists, you know, uh, consumers because their cars aren't ready to transport these kayaks to a place where they can go kayaking. So they have, to have something available to them. And then I think, I think two answers. Do we want to make sure that this activity is still available on the west coast of our city for tourists to enjoy? Uh, that's one. If the answer is no, then the rest of it's a moot point. If the answer is yes, then it's, is it, is it more effective and, and more feasible to do it ourselves? Or do we contract with someone to do it? And then if we contract with someone to do it, then it's, then, then, you know, every single business has the opportunity to apply, make a proposal, do whatever the, the case is, and business becomes business. And, and, and we hire someone to do that for us instead of us doing it ourselves. So I'm certainly not make, wanting to make a jump ball for anybody that has a kayak rental business to go and dump kayaks in at Serenio Vista Park. I am saying, let's continue our ecotourism as an attraction here. Let's facilitate a way for them to enjoy that. Um, and how we do it becomes the question. That's all.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Um, yes, I think, I think the overall goal was, um, you know, if somebody has a rental boat license or kayak business license, to think that they can just use any park to run their business. And I think what we wanted to do was stop that. Um, I do think we need to ask our Parks Department, where should these kayak locations be? And as a councilman, I'm not for the city doing it cause we learned that we shouldn't run water parks and we shouldn't, there are a lot of other things that we're not good at. I think we should find the locations where the need is and develop P3s to find professionals to do it. to do it. And, and at the same time, we're bringing in income for our city and our parks. I think that's the best way to do it, rather than say, we don't want any businesses at our parks. Now, I think we do want some businesses that add a feature to our city that the citizens and tourists need, but I don't think that our, our local government should be worrying about running kayak stations and renting kayaks. I think we need to identify where kayakers like to go in the city and for our Parks Department to say, that's a good spot or this is a good spot, and then put a P3 out. What kayak business is interested in developing something at this park where it's a, where it's an asset to the city and where, where the city gets an income from it. That, that, that's what I'm for. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
I'm good.
All right. The only thing, while Councilmember Shepherd was talking and someone mentioned lockers, and I kind of thought that was a good idea. So I pulled up while we were talking, undetended kayak kiosks. And it appears that the cost for a 12 unit, they, they have eight and 12 units, was about $10,000 for an eight, an eight unit kiosk and about 12, little over 12, about 13,000 for a 12, 12 unit kiosk. Now, since you're on the TDC as a liaison, Councilmember Shepherd, would this something that would qualify to apply for through the TDC?
I don't know, but I can find out. We have a meeting
Monday.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, so I kind of like the kiosk ideal. It's something, somebody comes up, swipes the card, they get, they go do their kayaking, it's unattended, we don't have to worry about it. They bring it back. So that may be an option for us, where we still providing, providing amenity and they have the, the walk up to the kiosk and maybe something that, because it's ecotourism, TDC, we might, may be, may, might be able to get the funding to provide the kiosk.
I'll ask, but I, my, my just initial thought is that they wouldn't because even though it's minorly a business venture, it in itself is a business venture, you know, a for-profit business venture, unless, unless we set it up to be a nonprofit type, type of deal. I'll ask.
Yeah, to me, you're just running it for the day and whatever the maintenance for, for that particular type of program for a year, I'm sure that's all we're going to try to recover. We're not in it to make any, to make any, make any business or any money from, from it as a for-profit. It's just more or less providing an amenity. And, and, you know, that, I think, you know, you could put them there, a kiosk, you could, you could do it up at Crystal Lake. That may be another, another opportunity up there where it's not as busy as Serenio Vista because of all the traffic. So that may be something that you could put up at, at Crystal Lake where, where a person could go out and, and utilize it. So there could be some opportunities there. And other than the initial outlay of the equipment, you know, I think, I think you're up and running pretty quickly. So I just wanted to mention that. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. I think basically what a few of the council I'm hearing for is like the P3s is having a business that could oversee the kiosk, could oversee the ecotourism, to have someone help. I know when I went to Key West, we did the rental and we went into a path and we had a guide to kind of explain to us where we're going and what we're doing. So I think this is what Councilman Stanky is, is asking for, which I'm in favor of because I really feel that this is, I know it's such much a need, but we do live in Cape Coral, which we're known for our waterways. When people come here, that's what they want. They want to see our, our ecosystem. So I feel that if we can kind of open up and look into this a little deeper and come up with a, a policy for these P3 businesses and what is wanted out in these parks, what people are seeing that they would like to see that would not distract the neighborhood. I, like I said, I, I really miss, I, I believe we're missing out on some really great opportunities for the future of Cape Coral. I, I feel that what Councilman Stinky is saying, yes, the, the kiosks are great, I'm in agreement, but you're missing the biggest part is someone leading this to help with the tourism. And in order to do that, we would have to do a P3. So I'm in favor of this to move forward and figuring out a way that we can develop a policy for these future businesses and what parks would be available for them, you know? So if someone wants to say, well, I, I want to do the jet ski business, well, great, you can't do it in this park, you can't do it in this park, you can't do it in this park, but what you can do is we could do it in this park, but it's going to be a P3 and this is how this is going to work. You get your tax license through the city and we get a portion of your business. that's my opinion. And I know we can get creative. I know we can. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd, then I'll go to city manager.
The part, the locker feature is, is good, but it has a lot of bad parts to it. I think that tourists or even myself, I've lived here for a long time and I, I never got on a kayak. A machine, a machine's not going to tell me when I put my money in that, how to be safe, where to go, how it works, what to do, what not to do. You know, I think when people go to these locations with the kayaking, you know, it's an educational thing. It's not even just about kayaking. It's about someone showing them the area and pointing out the different things in nature and having a guide and, you know, so I, I really think by doing this the proper way and finding the right locations and doing a P3, I believe is an asset to the community. And it's, it's a need and, and the lockers, I think, would work for someone who does it all the time. It doesn't need to, doesn't need someone to show them how. They already know where to go, you know?
You got a lake.
Yeah, it's just, it's just different. I wouldn't want to have a boat rental place where you just put money in, swipe your card and go hop on a boat. That'd be pretty scary. And we deal with that now. We get people coming down and renting boats and never drove a boat before and do some crazy things. That's my opinion.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. I think it's fairly clear to me that you all would like ecotourism. So you have told me what you want. You've given me some policy direction. I think what is prudent for us to do so that you all don't keep trying to figure out what's happening is for November 29th, we have a CRA board meeting in the morning. We did not have a COW item. We have three items on the CRA board meeting. We can complete those items, adjourn, reconvene in a COW, and I can have, we, the Parks Director has already put together for me, we had it ready today, but it seems like there's good discussion. We will convert that information on what we're doing now, how they're accomplishing what we're doing at, at the Four Mile Cove Eco Park. The lockers were explored for that and others because we thought, okay, when we're not doing programming for sunset cruises and whatnot, we could have kayaks available. So my recommendation is give us a couple of weeks to put together a presentation on the options. Specifically, I'm, I'm not broadening the scope to the jet skis because I don't think that was the original intent. Let's deal with this ecotourism from, from paddle, paddle boards, paddle boats, kayaks, canoes, fishing kayaks, whatever it is. We'll bring back the presentation and have a COW on the 29th to, to present some ideas and topics. And then hopefully you'll have some things to review. We can talk about them before the meeting and then we can get some good guidance on what you want us to do by December 31st.
I like it.
Sounds great.
So we'll add it to a future COW.
The next one. We'll, we'll
We'll have to make it a COW meeting
After the CRA
Next week.
After, yeah.
Okay. All right. Sounds like a plan and hopefully we'll have all eight of us here to weigh in on the discussion. All right. Move on to item five, roundtable discussion. Is there any roundtable discussion? Any council members? Mr. City Manager, you have any roundtable items? Okay, time, place, future meeting. We have a regular meeting in the Cape Coral City Council, scheduled for Wednesday, November 15th, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.